I have everything.
Well, we want to call the meeting to order and everyone is present except for trustee Miller. So, thank you. Welcome, everyone to this conference. Uh, item two point four, recognitions.
So, we have um some everyday heroes, a couple of everyday heroes that we want to be able to recognize here. And I've got Dr. Melissa Moreno here to present those. And I think I'll just go ahead and turn it over to you, Melissa, to to present those awards.
Thank you. Thank you for uh giving us this time. So um as you um probably recall, I'm the interim vice president for School of Extended Learning. And in this last year, we've had quite a project and an overhaul and a lot of changes happened with our Center for Lifelong Learning becoming part of our School of Extended Learning. And um there's just been so much work that we've been doing as a team. And um several of our team is here, so I wanna at least recognize everybody that's here. They all deserve an everyday hero award, but I can only choose two. Um but I wanna recognize everyone, so thank you for being here, Jose, Ken, Barb, and Andy. Is there anybody else on my team? Okay, but um last year, these are from twenty seventeen. And last year um uh two folks really stood out as um being a hero. And the first one is Andy Harper. He um went from being the executive director to Center for Lifelong Learning to be a senior director for the School of Extended Learning. And I think Andy experienced the biggest change in the team. And I have to say uh what he did was so gracious and full of support. And I think we've truly become uh a a close knit partnership and he's my right hand man. And I just wanted to thank him for everything he did, which was Herculean to get us to where we are today. So Andy, you're my everyday hero. And my second award is um to Barb Dixon, who has a title that I didn't know what it meant before now, who is a Program System Support Specialist. Did I get that right? And Barb Dixon is just an amazing person behind the scenes and what she has done to help us to rebrand and to rebuild websites. And she's our backend Lumen's uh banner expert. And she really just did an amazing job um helping us to transition and continues to be a a everyday rock star. So Barb, thank you so much for everything that you've done.
There you go. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. Um well, we will be pulling item four point one. So the Joint Board of Trustees Academic and Economic Resource Committee discussion about SBCC facilities.
Yeah, just a quick comment on that. The idea was that we continue our exploration of the facilities at SBCC. And I really feel it's valuable and I and we're pulling it today, but I really wanna just postpone this. It's really important for the board to hear from the users of our buildings, from their experiences in these buildings and and what it's what it's like, you know, living in these buildings. And so we're gonna we're pulling it for now, but we're gonna basically postpone it uh for a later date and continue this discussion of our facilities. So that's that's what's going on there.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Reed. Item three point one, public comment guidelines. Uh members of the public have the opportunity to directly address the board on any item of interest to the public that is within the jurisdiction of this board, whether or not it is an item noticed on this agenda. A member of the public may also speak before or during the board's consideration of any item listed on this agenda. Generally, no action may be taken on any item not noticed for action on this agenda, but the board may receive input from the public. Unless otherwise determined by the board, each person is limited to five minutes, twenty minutes per issue. Those wishing to address the board at this meeting should complete a written request. And I have it from Angie. I would like to invite Ms. Danielle.
Ms. Swantec.
Ms. Danielle Swantec.
Hi, um I'm Danielle.
And Angie, sorry, and Angie will keep your time.
I'm Danielle Swantec. I teach in the history department here. Um I'm here today to voice my concern about the administration's apparent willingness to tolerate the public attacks via all campus email on Professor Ray Napoleon. As I'm sure you know, on March nineteenth, Ray sent an all campus email that forwarded mainstream newspaper articles written in two thousand and four about allegations of sexual assault and sexual harassment against Dr. Michael Shermer, who was speaking on campus. Several of us had discussed what we should do once we learned of the allegations against Dr. Shermer. And I might have been the one to have sent out the email, except that I was in class. I fully support what Ray did. In response, Dr. Shermer sent a letter forwarded to all campus email by another SBCC faculty member that accused Ray of libel and defamation and threatened her with a restraining order. Since then, he has made a series of threatening legal demands that have forced Ray to retain an attorney. Earlier this week, I sent a letter via all campus email letting the campus know about his actions and that a GoFundMe campaign had been set up to help Ray with her legal fees. In all of this, the silence of the administration has been deafening. Why are these kinds of vicious attacks against Ray via all campus email allowed? Why are handful of male faculty members allowed to create a hostile work environment for female faculty members, staff, and students? How is it at all controversial that we might be concerned for our safety if an alleged sex offender is invited to speak on campus? At a minimum, the administration should publicly denounce the legal threats and harassment against Ray. At a minimum, the administration should not allow a few faculty members to bully and harass others via email. I myself received a vaguely threatening email as a result of sending out my email about the GoFundMe campaign. Academic freedom is important, but academic freedom should never excuse bullying. A PhD in a teaching position should never excuse harassment. We need real leadership on this campus to address serious issues of gender discrimination, harassment, and bullying. Women on this campus should not have to fear for our safety. We should be able to speak out in support of colleagues and students to voice our concerns about sexual assault without fear of being bullied via email and legal threats. The administration's silence on this matter only enables this threatening and clearly unacceptable behavior. I would hope in the face of this current incident that SBCC would develop clear policies on professional standards in email use. Some of this is pragmatic. Our emails are public property and should reflect the values of our community. More important, instructors are more than simply lecturers in classrooms. We are guides and role models to our students, and we should be modeling civil discourse and informed academic debate. We should not tolerate an environment where faculty, staff, and students are silenced through bullying and harassment. Thank you.
Thank you. Um we have a Ms. Rodney Napoleon. Okay. Um I'd like to invite Ms. Krista Palmer.
Hello, um I know many of you already, many of you know me. Um I am on the student government here. We were ones that I'm here to um support Ray Napoleon. And also um we were, we endorsed the event, which unfortunately I wish I knew ahead of time. Um but I've had a lot of difficulties on this campus, especially with this administration and how we deal with things. And I'm very, very disappointed in this college as a whole, this administration. Um and um I had access to President Bibi's email and response to all of this. And um it was very disheartening to read as a student. So there's just, I'm sure you all got it, 'cause you're all in the all campus emails as well. But um I just wanted to read it, so we all can understand it together. So, to dear, to my dear colleagues, if we stand back a bit, we can all learn from the contentious discussions we have recently witnessed on our all campus email. People have pled with me to please stop them, imploring the superintendent president to somehow moderate the discussion, so they are more respectful. Sorry to disappoint you, but no, I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to censor or police this all campus email. The power of respect lies in each of us to exercise. It is not for me to exercise over you. Then the second paragraph gets into um Dr. Bibi talking about himself, which this situation is not about you. It's a serious, it's to deal with the campus, the toxic campus culture that we have on here that silences women. I've experienced this as well as a woman on this campus, and especially as a woman of color. As a sidebar, until I read some of the ongoing email threads this evening, I was jubilant to have just completed this week my hundredth classroom visit at SBCC. This is a huge personal milestone. Of course, I'm not done, and I have many outstanding class invitations to fulfill. However, SBC faculty and my colleague CEOs, I have told about this across the state, have indicated this is unheard of. For me, it is, at least in my thirty years in education and a dozen years as a college president. One thing I can tell you from this experience, and that is real, that it really puts things into perspective. I cannot even begin to tell you what I have learned in these classrooms, visits, and the instructional talent and learning that I have witnessed. It it has been just unbelievable on so many levels, and I'm humbled by the privilege and opportunity. Someday, I will try to describe to you my experience. Then he goes, back to the way we have been treating each other. I'm not pleased with it. However, just like any other venue on campus, the all campus email is a community area where free speech exists. Let's define free speech, please, here. I'm really wanting to. Because as a woman, reading this and experiencing it, it's hate speech. It goes against everything women stand for, because if you guys can't even stand up for this instructor as a white woman, this school does not represent me as a black woman and a woman of color, period. And then he goes on to talk about how we don't need to focus on this situation, because we should be focusing on students. I would just like to add that caring about the faculty means caring about the students. If my professor is stressed out, if she can't even go to committee meetings, if she can't even sit in department meetings, because there is a man in there that has disrespected her, how do you expect her to get in front of her class and properly teach to her students? Students that have been, have experienced sexual assault and rape on a daily constant basis on this very campus. We have to open our eyes and support women, listen when they speak, and support the faculty and staff that are doing the work and supporting the students. I am very disappointed in you, Dr. Bibi, for this email. I am very disappointed that you have neglected this situation, that you have silenced women. They don't feel comfortable with speaking on this campus. They don't feel comfortable with standing up for their own students, because they're silenced by the administration. This is a call to action for the administration to wake up, 'cause we need to start supporting people on this campus. If I, as a student, I am appalled. I cannot believe that my my fellow professors are having to deal with this, with PhDs, with how successful they are, with how brilliant they are. This is unheard of, and you are leadership on this campus. You set the tone for the dynamic on this campus. So I want you to step in and handle situations like this. And I want you to be that strong leader with the equity-driven mindset that we need on this campus, 'cause if not you, then who? It trickles down. It's a triangle. It's a domino effect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. So that moves us to item four point two, legal reference update, revision to board policy seventy three thirty, legal receipts. Um at this point, I'd like to ask and invite Ms. To um, Dr. Henson, sorry, um to give us any information that we might need.
Should I do it from here or how does it start here?
Whichever is most uh comfortable for you.
So this board policy, although um.
It didn't start with me. It happened before I came on board in April and I think two thousand seventeen. Uh so it's gone through the process. But one of the things that um is important to note here is the only, the impetus for this change in this policy was the fact that we didn't have to necessarily do a TB test anymore. Now it's either a TB test or an assessment. And this was all spurred by the shortage of this TB test about five years ago. So there wasn't enough to go around, and it was delaying the hiring of employees for public sectors that required that employees have a TB clearance. So for all new employees um within sixty days of hire, so they would have had to have a current TB test that was uh taken at least sixty days before they came on board. And that is um a requirement, an all K twelve community college public sector. Um then if they have something that they've completed within that sixty days and they come on board and they're okay, we don't have to have them TB'd again or do the assessment now with the new law. But if they don't have anything um that's current within the last sixty days, then they're required to have either the TB test or the assessment now. And that's at the cost to the new hire. That's the only burden that we don't share with them, is that they must pay. But in our district, um it's been our practice to reimburse them for the cost of that assessment or the TB. So that's part of it for new hires. Now, for people that are currently employed, we have a requirement that's not really new. Every four years, at the cost of the district, we're required to have our employees TB every four years, or now TB or assessment. Um and and that's a requirement. And I think there was a question as to what happens if somebody doesn't abide to that. And we do have to send many reminders to employees, because they don't take it seriously all the time. But I have been in districts where somebody has said, you have to stay home until you take care of this, because we're at risk of uh of harming others, you know, with uh their health, if we don't have that done. So the impetus for this one was, the only bigger change on this was that now we have the risk assessment versus just the TB test. And then that came forward, and I think that, I think that there were some questions about that. So if anybody has any questions regarding that, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Well, we have doctors and technical issues on the show.
Yeah, there's there's a history to this, because I originated some questions about this when it came up before your time. And um they primarily center around what's required and what's not required. And as I understood it, and also the consequences issue. The consequences is not so much the question of what happens if you don't go and get your test? It's what happens if you have TB and cannot be cleared with the test? Are you then unable to work at the college? Are you fired? What is that consequence? And um in the first part of raising that question, it got referred to our legal counsel, who started to research it, and he said, that's an important question. And he hasn't finished that research, so he is not, in fact, comfortable with what we now have. Um I talked to him today, just to confirm that status. Also, the concern centered on the move, as I read it, from the old um the old policy, if you're reading the underlined green, or the underlined in the strikeout, um we seem to have added, all employees shall be required to undergo a tuberculosis risk assessment every four years to determine if they're free. So you have the new hires. I think that's pretty clear. You don't get to start work. And I'm not concerned about that. But an employee who's already with the district is in a very different situation, I think. And it appeared that we were expanding it not just to, from faculty, but to everyone, adding in all our classified as a new element to the existing policy. So both of those are big steps, particularly when we are now paying for the test. We're taking on the cost, um the x-ray or the risk assessment or the skin test. And we're adding in all the classified folks. And it was also um then a question in my mind, because the statute seems to make that entirely optional. So if it's optional for us to require every four years, the question to me was, what are we trying to accomplish? Do we wanna do that if if it's not necessary? Um and the legal update, when I read that, did not require us to re, to do it every four years for existing employees and classifieds.
It, that's my, not my understanding. I I, my understanding was that we are obligated by statute to do it every four years. But there is some um deviation from that. If we can do it more frequently than four years, if we get a recommendation from the local health department that we're at risk or an individual's at risk, then that's where the boards has um authority to make it more often. We can't wait the four years, because this is an urgent need. But the four-year requirement, it's, and I'm not sure, I can't answer to why it had not been in here already, because that's been law for forever, since I've been in education.
Uh I'd have to go back, but I didn't wanna do the legal work. I wanted to refer to legal counsel. And that's basically, he hasn't finished the research. That's why I felt like it wasn't ready for us.
Does the board have any other questions for Dr. Hassan? And then we can open it up for discussion once we get a motion, but any other technical questions while she's here.
Yeah, I'll really, um follow up, but um as a trustee, I think we get this little check, Harry. We're considered employees, I guess, 'cause you, anyway. Does that mean that we have to get a TB test every four years? 'Cause so if we get reelected after a four-year term, we'd have to go get another test.
But you're not really considered an employee of the district, uh per se. You're paid a stipend to serve a, as a board member. But it it would be a local decision. That's where we have to make a decision and just be consistent with it. But that, the law really is applicable to in classified and faculty management employees that are part of the regular.
I just ask, because, you know, the IRS says I'm an employee, because you told them so.
Yeah.
You know, I.
No, you're right. I mean, that is a technical thing.
It doesn't make sense to me. I.
That's a good question, babe.
I don't care, but I necessarily, but I don't, it doesn't make sense.
And most organizations that I work with, they just have that obligation for it, because you're out visiting school sites, especially in the K twelve area. You're out there with students often, and here we do have, you know, we have students as well, you know. So many districts choose to make that the the rule.
Uh tell me, what's involved in a risk assessment?
It's um, so you would go to the physician that would uh, the same office that would do the TB exam, but consider that as a questionnaire. It's a one-page questionnaire about, have you traveled to a country that has this uh epidemic? Epidemic, I'm not sure how the language is, but there are about four or five questions. Uh one of them is travel, one of them is anybody that you know. And then if you answer negative to those, that no, then you don't have to go through the TB test. And it's a quick process, but it is about the same expense that it would be to have the TB test done and the exam, because you're taking the time of the physician to to do the report, the assessment. So it's, but on the other side, some people are really, were frustrated with the fact that every four years, they had to do the TB test, even though they always are negative and they haven't been at risk. So this uh provided a more positive option for them to not have to go through that and to have the assessment done instead.
It would seem as if the the assessment, as you describe it, could be done online and should not uh in incur the the same type of cost. The other question related would be, for those who test positive, they will always test positive. And so therefore, this this is a redundant thing that that they're asked to do. And I think if we're gonna make a policy, then we we need to, we need to uh exercise precaution there. The 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 remedy of which is a chest x-ray every four years. I know that for a fact, 'cause I did test positive.
You're absolutely right. So people that test positive will always test positive, so they they will have to go through the more expensive route also of having the the chest x-ray completed every four years. So instead of the TB test or the assessment, now it's the the exam for people that test.
This gets back to Marsha's question about the length of time involved. Um I I don't know of any, the correlation between four years versus six years and a benefit to the state, meaning the students. And I guess we should find out what the state really requires.
Yeah, our own po.
Well, we'll discuss it, but is there any more questions for?
Well, I don't, you know, what did you, what was your opinion of what happens to a person who has TB and is a teacher? Uh given our own.
I would.
We describe them as, the person is unfit to instruct or associate with students if they're a new hire. So would that apply to existing persons?
Well, it, yeah, they would have to go through treatment before they're allowed to be um in proximity to students. Is what, I've never had that happen personally, ever in my career. But they would have to go through some treatment to take care of that in order to uh be able to return to work. So it would be something that we would need to consider. And I don't have that answer for you, the legal answer for you today here.
Any other questions? Uh Liz, you have a question.
I just wanted to clarify from Marsha, um ever since I worked here, every four years, it's been required for classified staff to have a TB test. So it's not new. It used to be that our health services department would do it. And they, a few years ago, they, a couple of years ago, they changed. And now we have to go out, do a med center, and they'll pay up twenty-five dollars for it. But it's, it's always been, since I've been here, we've always had to do it every four years. It just, it used to be done by the college.
But it was not in the policies before, and that's why it didn't look like we were doing it.
Yeah, but I, just so you know, they have been doing it.
And and do you know the answer, if somebody's positive, existing employee?
No.
I think if somebody's positive, the first step would be to do the chest x-ray.
Well, the chest x-ray is what happens, but if they really have TB, I'm not sure what the policy is.
Okay, well, so the motion, it's recommended that we approve this. So it's their motion to approve uh revisions to board policy seventy three thirty. Okay, second. Okay, um it's been moved to second to approve board policy seventy thirty. Is there any discussion?
I'll uh move to table.
Move to table? Is there a second to table? And so you move to table until further information is prepared?
Until, yeah, I I I left it deliberately open, so that we could make the decision when that information comes forward.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve and we have a motion to table.
No, you have a motion to table.
You wanna amend the other motion, just kidding?
To to table, that's the motion on the table.
Well, right, but.
The other, the other, the other motion has to wait until we vote on this.
That is, so you wanna override the motion that was first and second. So is there um all in favor to table item four point two, board policy seventy three thirty?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Yeah, between you both.
Oh, sorry, opposed, yes, I oppose.
So three, three.
Oh, gosh, we're not even responding. Okay, I move to, I I'm gonna change my vote to table.
And I'm, and number is really helpful.
Um so thank you, you guys, and this will come back to us then um when legal gives more information.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to get specifics about what it is that they're, that they're, we're concerned about here, so we can actually nail that down, otherwise we're gonna be spinning with this for the next years.
No, I agree.
And we can't.
Okay.
Okay, item five point one, minutes of the regular meeting of February twenty second, twenty eighteen, and March eighth. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second. Okay, it's been moved to second to approve the minutes from February second and March eighth, two thousand and eighteen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. Uh item six point one, a receipt of Faculty Association initial collective bargaining proposal. And we do have a speaker on this. Uh oh, Ms. Cornelia.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Fantastic.
You're back there hiding in the corner.
Back there hiding in the corner, over there. Right. Honorable members of the Board of Trustees, President Gallardo, Deputy. Um first of all, so I have to go back, I have for you, hot from the press, the FA newsletter, which I would like to hand out. Who is authorized to take those on?
You have a listening.
You are authorized.
Second. I would like one, thank you.
Um so stacked with interesting reading, from the first to the last page. Like I mean, there's only four pages, so it's a great, it's it's not only interesting, it's also quick reading. And um on the very last page, um you will find the highlight of the year, which is the annual FA Spring Party on April twenty seventh. And you are all invited to celebrate with us and celebrate our retirees. And I hope many of you will be able to make it. Secondly, uh but also majorly important, I am submitting the Faculty Association proposal for a new contract today. Um the current contract is expiring on June thirtieth, and I tell you that day will be here in no time. So let's have a look at this today, even though there are still many unknowns. Um especially, we do not have the May revise yet. We do not know if the chancellor will go forward with a new funding formula. And if he does, what will that funding formula look like? And if they do not go forward with this, who is getting the hundred and seventy-five million ongoing money that was earmarked for this formula endeavor? And I hope some of this will reach SBCC. Um I think there's more people like the need to, so we're hoping for that. But there are a lot of things we actually do know, so let us focus on those. Um if I may refer you again to this wonderful newsletter, uh you will find on page three, our newest faculty salary study, uh researched and compiled by our salary study specialist, Anna Farmer. Uh, you will find on page three, our newest faculty salary study, uh researched and compiled by our salary study specialist, Anna Formally. And since you are the ones who sign our contracts, you all know that we do have codified a common goal of paying median salaries. To our faculty. And I would like to express again my appreciation that we do share this important goal. But as you can see in the study table on the far right column, we have fallen behind this common goal. And the slide is significant, we are looking at some steps. Uh, and see that we are six percent, seven percent, even close to eight percent below our colleagues around the state. The FA understands that with our current drop in enrollment, our financial situation is less than desirable. But that cannot deter us from doing the right thing for our employees. We want to attract and keep the best of the best. We cannot do this with pay rates that do not measure up, especially not in a community like Santa Barbara. And while you are looking in the newsletter at our full time schedule here, let us also talk about our part time faculty as well. Two thousand four, yes, two thousand four, more than a dozen years ago. It was that we made the last true progress in the salaries of our instructional part time faculty in our college. Their salary table is very short and very skinny. It has only nine steps and one class. If you are a part time instructor, you are basically asked to teach for half price. It is about time that we show our part timers our appreciation that they are teaching here, and almost half of all the classes offered at this college. And um, by the way, not everything we are proposing costs money. Let me point out one item where actually the FA is making an offer. We are offering to provide our experience, our knowledge, and our input on two very important college committees. CPC and BPEP. Well, we actually have been offering this for a while, but the district has not taken us quite up on this offer yet. So why is that? Well, when I asked why, for example, our classified union is allowed to send representatives to these committees. I was told, well, they have it in their contract. Okay, so let's put this into our contract as well. I do not think that there are many colleges in the state that do not have at least one representative from their faculty union on their central planning committee. We might even be the only one. And I truly believe that the FA has a lot to contribute. So here we go, we are just asking that you allow us to help. It will be a win-win situation for everyone. Thank you so much for your attention, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you.
None? Thank you.
So this is um, uh, action item for us to receive. The Faculty Association initial um, collective bargaining contract proposal, did you have a um question for Cornelia?
Yeah, kinda. You were in.
Sorry.
Cornelia, you were in our meetings when, a few years back, and I think, you know, maybe three, four years ago. I recall um, that we um, we reviewed and and went over. And you think you were present when, when some of these uh classifications were updated and there were raises given.
Yes.
You know, and um, that's kinda where this uh, where the little blue stuff down here on step thirty one, two, thirty four came from, I believe. In your newsletter.
Yes, thank you.
I think that's where that, where that came from, and I thought we were a lot closer than these numbers, how did we get so far out of whack? Every other schools raised their, and we didn't, but it's only been a few years.
That's true, but the others moved fairly fast. That is, that is very true, and um, believe me, I, the faculty is truly appreciating. That significant move forward we made a few years ago. Um, especially um, for, we we had especially a fall leg at that time. In class five, in the higher class, and also in the higher steps. Um, at some, I think the blue items still come from even more years ago. Which I'm not hundred percent sure if I remember them so closely. When uh the faculty made the purposeful decision to attract more um qualified faculty members. By helping the lower classes and lower steps, but that on the opposite side. Resulted in for everybody else kind of falling behind more, but yes, you're, you are right, we were actually everywhere even.
Yeah.
And then um, or almost even, and this has, this has occurred within the last three years.
Okay, so I I personally see the reasons, but could you explain more on why the Faculty Association would be good on College Pl- Planning Council and BPEP? Why you think we should do that?
Okay, so the College Planning Council is the main planning council on campus. Uh, one of the major tasks of the, of CPC is to advise the administration. On financial issues, on fiscal issues, so basically everything they recommend to the president will. Or a a lot of the things that they recommend to the president will eventually uh lead to an impact on the college budget. So for sure, the Faculty Association, as every um bargaining unit on campus. Has an intrinsic interest in the health of the college budget and what the money is spent for, because. Um, since we want to look at the overall financial health, we want to look at the um. Level of the salaries, um, the, the level of the salaries and compensation uh for faculty and all other employee groups. You know, we can't like have a situation that everybody else is making the decision on where the money goes. And then the Faculty Association is presented with the fact, oh yeah, by the way, we spent the money for this, that, and that. Uh, unfortunately, there's nothing left over. That is a very, that is, I I think it's, it's just not a very good situation, and we have. Uh, experts um on financials and budget in the FA, and we would love to just pres- just provide our input. Um, BPEP is a similar situation, uh, BPEP, a lot of uh. Uh, policies we have on camp- campus are um immediately addressing working conditions for employees, including working. Conditions for faculty, um, you probably know that, but I might, I, if you please allow me to repeat that. Um, at SBCC, we have the uh situation that the outside of, no. Within the contract times, that means while we have an existing contract. The negotiation of working condition is delegated from the originally responsible Faculty Association. To the Academic Senate during times where we actually are in contract. However, this does not release the Faculty Association from being the ultimate responsible. For working conditions as agreed upon with the administration here on campus. So that means if a faculty member feels wronged by working conditions in the policies. They can go to PERC and they can sue the FA. They are not going to sue the Academic Senate, they are going to go behind us and say, what you did is an unfair labor practice. And so um, we feel oftentimes very worried that the FA is not immediately involved in BPEP. Yes, we have a little bit of a leeway or or an influence in the Academic Senate, but. That we feel we should be there where the original uh language is actually written, and just as a little um. Um, example, so in your own board policy about board policies, which I think went through a about a month ago. Um, it is somewhere listed that proposals for board policies are taken. From BPEP by the representatives to the Faculty Association, to the Senate, to the, to the CSEA. The problem is, the FA does not have a representative, so I don't even know who on BPEP would provide the FA with. Your proposals for board policies, so, yeah, I think it would be a good thing to add us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Cornelia?
Yes.
Which are your comparable schools? Are they the same that we normally use, or?
Yes, thank you, it's the same that we use, normally use, I don't know them by heart.
But at least we know, if we know it's the same, we know it's comparable.
I should have prepared for this question. It's the same, it's the same, which we used uh for compare for the previous. It's, I think it's ten schools and um. I can email them to you, but I don't, I must.
But that's okay, and there's a reason why you selected class two of class five for comparability?
At that time, we wanted to select two, uh, where, you know, which are kind of representative. For the, for the uh faculty we have, however, you know, if you, the. Higher classes are actually the more populated ones, so there's more faculty in classes four and five than in classes two.
Were the comparables comparable?
On this one, that would be a good question, I can ask our salary study expert. Um, you mean comparable on where, that I know they are com-
Percentage differences. If, you you're saying that, for example, in class two, step thirteen, there's a five point five, six percent difference?
Yes. Yes.
And it's not necessarily in our faculty's interest. What, what happens in class three and class four?
And four, uh, we did not do that. We, the classes one, three, and four, we are not researched.
Okay, that's good.
And otherwise, we would definitely have shared it with you, but it's, it's, this takes a lot of time and a lot of hours.
No kidding.
Right, and so we kind of focused, that that was done like from the first time we started salary studies about. Four years, brother, when was that, four years ago, five years ago, right, um, we always started with only these two classes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cornelia, and so. We're not giving Cornelia more than her five minutes of public comment, she just happens to also be the point of contact for questions, just for the record, but we do like you, and we would entertain you, so. Uh, you have another question, Cornelia?
Yeah, following up on Peter's comment, I'm curious, um, we do have a heavier weighting of faculty in the higher class five.
Right.
Um, do we know how that compares to the ten sco- in the ten schools?
Right, that I would have to ask, that I, this information, I.
In other words, a proportion of their faculty in these categories.
Faculty, I don't know. But I would be happy to find that out for you.
Because that, that would address the question of comparability, are we really talking apples and apples?
Well, what we do, and what is comparable, is the criteria for our class two and for our class five. So we are uh comparing our class five to whatever class they have, which is a high, their highest non-doctorate.
Right, but in terms of numbers who fit into that class.
Right.
So if if we find that there's a a school that really is an outlier, it has preponderance of faculty at the lower end of the, of the pay scale. And then we have a problem in terms of comparability.
Comparability, well, I will find that out for you.
Cool.
Thank you, Cornelia, Dr. Bibi, that you had anything to say?
Nope, no comments.
Well, thank you, well, so before any of this can happen, California law does require us to accept this proposal, so. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the pro- proposal.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second to receive the Faculty Association initial co- initial collective bargaining contract proposal, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, motion case.
Wonder what would happen if we said, we just don't accept this. Try to think of the logic of that motion.
No, then then Cornelia would have to try again.
Just for fun, no, we don't have to. Uh, seven point one, report of sabbatical outcomes. Ms. Catherine Larry.
Why, you were very patient.
Um, so Dr. Bibi, you wanna give us a little?
Katie Loris, uh, our theater arts professor is here to give us a report on her twenty sixteen sabbatical that she took. Um, which is a while ago, but.
It is, it seems years ago, but I am so happy to be here, and thank you all.
We're glad that you're here.
Thank you so much uh for inviting me to to talk a little bit about this, um. One of the interesting things I think about Santa Barbara City College's sabbatical is that, like so much else we do here, it's all about the students. It's not really about a personal project for me, or even, you know, writing something that it would mostly serve my own career. It's really about students and how can we best help our students. Um, so for me, that was really the starting point. Um, I thought about the questions that my students asked, and to what extent my own knowledge was current um about that. Um, so as you can see by this uh top of the Google slide, um, it was about where do I go from here? Every semester, I have students that come up to me and talk about wanting to get more training after they leave Santa Barbara City College in the realm of acting or theater. And um, I realized at some point that my main base of knowledge was from my own uh experience. Going to, looking at undergrad schools and grad schools when I was their age, essentially. And as a point of reference, I was born and raised in Santa Barbara, I went to Jefferson School, it was condemned, and I went to Franklin School. Santa Barbara Junior High, Santa Barbara High, and I took classes here at Santa Barbara City College, and I acted in plays. And so I can relate to what they are going through, there's so many different programs out there, and sort of where should you go? Um, I often say at, in my first day uh to my students. That I'm so delighted to be here, because I feel like we're the anti charlatans uh of the business. There are charlatans in the world of acting schools, and by that I just mean people who take advantage of vulnerable actors and. Um, take their money and may not offer great training. And I love the fact that I know that my classes really um are about helping each of my students to. Uh, present themselves in a more positive, confident, powerful way. And and learn to the many, many, many things that are part of our discipline. Um, of course, when I was in school, we didn't have websites. Uh, when I was looking at schools, we didn't have websites, we had brochures. Um, but even today, you can look at websites and it feels like, oh, that's an amazing program. But I think it really requires sort of a boots-on-the-ground experience. Uh, meeting people, talking to students to to really understand what's a great program and what could I recommend. Um, I have to say, one of the things that really motivated with me was, I knew a number of students that were talking about a school called AMDA. I I I don't mean to to slur that per se, except that other people said it should be called SCANDA. Now, I I just really was motivated to get into that school. It has LA and New York uh uh presences, um, it's a four-year program, it's also a two-year uh certificate program. And I made it my mission to get into AMDA. Uh, PS, I never got into AMDA, I tried, I tried so hard to get into AMDA, unfortunately, um, after about. Hmm, fifteen emails back and forth, uh, they never would allow me in to see what was going on there. Which to me is a sort of red flag, it's a very expensive school. Um, so in terms of um beginning this process, I started by making a pretty comprehensive list of schools. Both that our students go to a lot, we have a lot of schools that transferred to UC Irvine. Um, and uh, and Cal State Long Beach, and then also some schools on the East Coast, like Columbia, Yale, Juilliard. That I wanted to visit, I wanted to sit in on classes and be able to talk to my students about what's going on in those classes. There are many different techniques about approaching acting, and I wanted to give my students uh an immediate um status quo on the state of acting training. So, um, one of the first things that happened was, I learned um the age-old cliche lesson, it's all about who you know. It is, I could not get into anywhere, I couldn't um get traction to visit classes without knowing somebody personally. So I had to really network to figure out exactly who I knew in any of these programs. I mean, I do know a lot of people in the business, but um acting classes are very, tend to be very private places. Um, and so to be able to walk into there, um, I had originally hoped to videotape things. I had originally hoped to bring my students to, into those classes for them to see firsthand, that was really not on the table. Um, classes were considered very sacrosanct, and I appreciate the fact that I was able to. Sit in on so many classes, as I ultimately did. Um, so uh, we can start um this. Um, basically, at. Um basically, at the end of seeing a whole bunch of classes um from. Uh I started in Mexico City, actually, at an amazing program, I'll show you the slide later. Um I went to one of the best programs, which is in a located in a Costco. Uh I mean, it's behind Costco in Santa Maria, one of the best, very affordable. Um so there were all range of classes that I went to. And I um and I wanted to really try to show my students in this Google slide that I've now prepared for them. And which is um gonna be embedded in Canvas, uh sort of a sense of how they could organize the possibilities of training. So go ahead, Liz. So this is the first slide, it's about, you know, where af- after our students spend um time in our classes, after they go through. A variety of classes that we offer, such as four to four levels of acting class, makeup, acting for the camera, voice and diction. Uh what do they do when they graduate, what are the possibilities, next slide? So there's a bunch of different um differences, I'm not gonna take the time of all of you uh to to go through these ponderously. But you know, you can do go to an acting conservatory, a BA, a BFA, acting classes classes at a studio, acting coaching, go ahead. And this was kind of a mapping of the different places that I went. To give them a kind of graphic sense of how these different uh sort of possibilities can be laid out, next. Um so a description of what is an acting conservatory is, we say it's kind of a trade school for acting, next. So this was the first one that I went to, and it is the one that is actually located behind Costco. In Santa Maria, it's the PCPA Conservatory of Performing Arts, those of you who've ever seen the Solving Theater Fest may. Be aware of that theater, um they also have theaters in Santa Maria, the Marion. Um and it's an amazing program, I started the morning at like six thirty in the morning in a ballet class. I went to a stage combat class, a vocal uh diction class, a uh singing technique class, a scene study class. I talked for many hours with the directors there, and it's an amazing program in the sense that it is so affordable. It is the same rate that ours is forty-six dollars a unit. Um it's highly competitive, they they audition, they have capped their audition at six hundred students a year. And they call back seventy, and they basically accept about twenty-five. So um highly competitive, but very affordable, they say that they have about a hundred percent employment rate at the end of their two-year program. Although admittedly, a lot of that is on theme in theme parks and on cruise ships. Uh next, yes.
How are they underwritten?
Uh it's by the state, it's a state program, yeah, yeah, they're affiliated with Alan Hancock. It's an amazing program. Okay, so I had never heard of this before, but I was interested to know that this is an analogous program to PCPA. Analogous in the sense that it's also affordable, um and analogous to the sense that like us, it has, you know, city college. Uh enrollment rates, um I mean, it's forty-six dollars a unit. Um it is a three-year program, not a two-year program like PCPA, it's located right on the campus of LACC. Um it's got a great movement program. Uh strangely though, it's not, it doesn't appear to be functioning as smoothly as PCPA. Um I saw a couple of our students there, I saw student students of ours at PCPA as well. Um but this program seems to be a little bit, uh I don't know, they're they're just not as robust, strangely, even though they're located right in LA. Next. Um so I'm I'm now just going to conservatories, this is sort of one of the jewels in the crown of the US drama universe. Uh mixing metaphors there, uh Juilliard, it was really quite wonderful to get in there and observe classes. Uh they're non-traditional in the sense that they're very exercise-based as opposed to dialogue-based. Um but it's obviously a very important class, a a very important program, um very competitive. Um but probably not much more competitive than PCPA, uh more expensive though, next. So this is an incredible program, and I spent several days there, it's a program right in the heart of Mexico City. It's run by Televisa, it is a a program with which basically uh enrolls students from all over Spanish-speaking. Countries worldwide, uh Televisa produces more uh programming than any company um in the world. Um and the students immediately are employed uh uh in telenovelas and films. Um they have all-day classes, they have masseuses, they have therapists. It's really a very all-around program, hard to get into, but again, a a very well-respected um acting program worldwide. Next. So um this is a an excellent program at Cal State Long Beach, I spent the day there and I observed a rehearsal of a musical that they were doing. A number of our students go here to Cal State Long Beach, um and I ran into a couple of them. Um it is pretty affordable, it is Long Beach, of course, there's very high um applications to Long Beach. Um but the theater program seems very healthy and um I sat in on voice and scene study. And actually got to watch an actress from the TV show Transparent. Interacting with the student actors in the musical that they did, so it was well worth the trip, next. Uh UC Irvine, uh this is probably the number one program to which our students uh transfer. It's a very big program, uh there it's a BA, not a BFA, so it's a more general ed program. Uh the BFA, there is a BFA there, but it's in the small uh musical theater portion of their program. Of course, it's a huge school, um and they are doing a ton of productions all the time, it's not guaranteed. That you get to be in a production when you go through UC Irvine, but um I sat in on a clown class. I sat in on a drama class, so it was an interesting program, uh the undergrad courses are taught by um. TA's largely, but again, it's an interesting and an important program even on a national level, next. Uh Cal State Fullerton, um a really very uh very exciting um BFA program in Fullerton. They have great contacts with the industry, they do a ton of musicals, they do a lot of style uh work, so a lot of classical drama. And again, I spent the um a couple days there uh in a variety of classes, next. And Tisch, I have a very uh jaundiced view of Tisch, um and it was reinforced by my visit there, I think it's a ripoff. It's been a ripoff, it was, it's still a ripoff. For me epitomized by the fact that um they accept, they they accept, you know, hundreds of students in each year their BFA. So it's about twelve hundred students in their BFA program, uh it costs more than seventy-two thousand a year. I asked, like the assistant dean I talked to, um how students afforded, I said, do you give good financial aid? And she said, we're an art school, not really, and I said, how do students afford it, and she said, private loans? Um so in talking to other people, it's it definitely, there are a lot of kids that come out of NYU saddled with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of debt. And um it it's uh it's tough, but they were interested in getting our students to transfer there, and we have had students transfer there. Next, it's in New York, so it doesn't get better than that. UCSB, our own homegrown uh university has a a very well-respected BFA program. Um and in talking to like Yale School of Drama, they told me actually UCSB is one of their biggest producers of students. Uh that go right to Yale School of Drama, so I spent again a couple days out there. It's it's a program that we're really encouraging more of our students to go to. The downside is when they transfer there, they have to do three years, uh not just two, and that's very cost prohibitive, obviously, for some of our students. So some of our students transfer there and they'll get a theater BA, uh like community theater BA, not the BFA program. Which again is hard for people who are trying to get done in four years, next. Uh Columbia, my alma mater, uh it was disorganized when I was there and it's still highly disorganized. I don't know what to say about it, it's. I was interesting to sit in on classes, uh interestingly, they have a more European approach to acting than any other. School that I visited um that tend to teach American method. Columbia is the sort of outlier with that, um it's in New York and that's the best thing you can say about it, next. Okay, Yale, the gold standard, and it is still the gold standard, it was incredible to be there, I sat in on a just phenomenal Shakespeare class. It was mind-blowingly good, uh again, I saw one of our students there, I mean, in this tiny school of like forty s- forty acting students. One of our students that had first taken an acting class with me a few years ago is a student there now, so. It's an MFA program, it's not um undergrad, but it's it was good to be able to report to my students what they're doing there, next. Uh so NYU, actually, their BFA program's terrible, but if you can can get into their MFA acting program, it's highly respected and by all accounts very good.
Next.
Uh HB Studios, if any of you are interested in ever doing an acting class as a one-off. HB Studios in New York is a great alternative to just go take a class, they refer to it as a gym for acting. You can drop in, they have all manner of classes, it's quite affordable, it's really quite wonderful, if you're in the mood for an acting class, next. So Burke Studios, this is a guy who studied at Yale, he's in LA, I wanted to sit in on a studio here, I think it's a decent studio. Um it doesn't just seem like a total ripoff, um and I've, you know, mentioned to my students, we may be able to actually miss that, next. So this was just some notes that I had about breaking into the business, information about unions, information about, you know, sort of where where the action is, next. And more more about breaking into the business, next. Working in the business, not as an actor, always a good idea to consider getting some great skill sets, we have amazing programs in tech over at at our side of campus. And it can be a great way to break into the business, the um actors' union is the same as stage managers, so. I had a friend actually at Columbia who had been a stage manager for Ocal Cudin. And got his lucky break as an actor in that, I don't know, a lucky break, but nevertheless, okay, next. Uh these are just kind of some final notes, I think we can go through all this. And after uh seeing um all of these, when I came back, one thing that I wanted to do was. To put, start to add to our website, because I've been looking at all these websites, so this is sort of like an evolving. Um if we can go to the next presentation, this is an evolving aspect of our own website, if you wanna just kind of quickly flip through it. Uh Liz, that would be great, these are our uh current instructors. And it's again like a way of getting our students to know who we are, and also it provides a kind of opportunity for me to be able to talk about. Pictures and how my students can go about getting headshots and what they want to really represent in those headshots. What I wanted to say in closing was this, um so when you think about acting, you may think uh irrelevant. You may think trivial, you may think uh kind of a luxury item. Um one thing I wanna say uh that I didn't even think of as I was writing this was, I recently got to see the pyramids, I hadn't been for years in Mexico City. And one thing that really struck me about going through this whole experience of the pyramids that uh that are are right by Mexico City. I I'm not gonna remember the name, but Teotihuacan thing, so was that when a society is great, the arts are great. When the society, when the arts are flourishing, we know that all is well. When the arts start to die, the societies decay. Um we are kind of the canary in the mine, so it's incumbent on all of us to support the arts. And I'm just like a more specific um to the discipline level, I just would say that. Um everything I've ever done, I owed a theater, I mean, I've I feel like I've been so fortunate in my career, I've. Written and and produced for television for years, I was an ethnomusicologist in the streets of Harlem, I. Ran an architecture office in Rockefeller Center, and best of all, I'm a professor at Santa Barbara City College. And theater got me there, because theater, what theater teaches is that you need to work, you may need to work endless hours. To get to the deadline that you set yourself, that you need to support a hu- entire community, the idea of creative communication. The idea of how to uh pick up your head and walk into a room and confidently introduce yourself to somebody. Um the the possibility of hope and human connection in the space that we call theater. Um it's such an important discipline, and I'm so overjoyed that every day I get to teach it at this school. And I just wanna thank you all so much for supporting sabbatical research, it really makes a difference to all of us in terms of what we can offer our students. And thank you for listening to me today.
I just wanna make a quick comment, you know, our students are so lucky to have you as their professor, you've got such valuable information there, your experiences are so. So rich and for them to experience your, you know, through you. Um this art is really, really an amazing thing for them, and I think they're very, very fortunate, we're fortunate to have you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for that report.
Thank you, I'm just wondering how much of the information is shared with the counselors and the advisors?
Oh, that's a great, that's a great idea, I mean, I've been making it more of a, you know, student presentation, but. Uh we have the wonderful Carmen Rivero, um who's from counseling, who's directly connected to theater, and I'll definitely make sure to send it to her, so thank you.
Thank you for your time. Um that moves us to item seven point two, grant update by Mr. Trump.
Well, I'm just the gonna introduce, um as you you may know, several years ago, we received our first Title V grant. Uh here is a Hispanic-serving institution and and that, from that grant, it just uh opened the door to allow us to to pursue other other initiatives. Um and so, you know, we currently have three Department of Education grants uh running concurrently, and that's pretty unheard of. Uh it's it's difficult to get one, let alone to have three coming off the heels of 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 two Title V grants. Uh one of which uh led to, you know, recognized programs like Press to Success and things like that, so. So with that, I think, you know, uh we asked the the project directors for uh three Department of Ed grants that we currently have. And one uh large state grant, a Basic Hill Transformation Grant, to prepare a a presentation for you to kind of update you on some of the work that. That you've seen come come by your way and some of the the initiatives that are occurring on campus. Uh to to really help move uh uh the needle for for our students in terms of their success, so with that, I don't know who's going to start up, oh Tina's gonna start up. So 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 they have a a joint presentation, because you you will see that there are some central themes that run through uh these initiatives that we're working on. And so Tina will kick us off uh and and uh moves along, thank you.
Well, good afternoon, everybody, I'm Tina Kissler, I'm a faculty member in the Communication Department, and I'm the uh director for our third uh Title V grant. Um I'm going to set the timer here because we want to say, so uh we are part of a team, I just wanna um introduce our team that we're gonna be talking about um federal grants. And from, uh I've been working on our grant, it's been in our fourth year, and this is the beginning of the grant with the IPAD grant, it's um. We have uh accessed over twelve point five million dollars and a half signed for the support of our students. Uh so uh what we'd like to do is just kind of an introduction, I want you to know that as we each come wa- uh walk through each of our grants. You'll see that really the focus of our grants is to increase um under success for underrepresented students. And to um get them to attain to their degree in great degree in commission. You'll also gonna notice some common threads, so as we speak, I want you to be mindful of kind of different threads. One of which is you'll see more integration between academic and student support services, so the integration construction. Um and student support, you'll also notice um a huge investment into faculty professional development. And then you'll also notice notice specific targeted interventions that we're doing for specific areas. And then you'll also notice, notice specific targeted interventions that we're doing for specific areas that we want to elevate for our underrepresented students. So I am, I am the director of the Title V, our third Title V IPATH grant. And yes, you can follow in your notes. We're going to click through pretty quickly some of these slides. So basically, this grant was written right after the ESP grant. So the whole goal of the Title V IPATH grant was to find a streamlined program that we can have our students go through their general education. So to create a streamlined educational pathway through their GE so that they can attain to their degree completion at a, at a Cal State University, Channel Islands or another university. The reason we say Channel Islands is because this Title V, we are a cooperative grant. We're the only cooperative grant, which means we work together with our partners at the Channel Islands, our closest regional CSU, which is Channel Islands. So I'm going to, there's different layers to the grant. So I'll tell you what, how that partnership works. But when you start a new program, you have to have a great team. So the team that I assembled was Elizabeth Impah for Professional Development, Dr. Joshua Ramirez for, he was our SBC CSU liaison. The reason I want to bring these individuals up is because they're going to be talking later and IPATH concerns is the foundation for some of the other grants. Nessa Olgi, who's not here, she's our wonderful IPATH Academic Councilor and Cheerleader, and Angela Warren, who's connected to our Transfer Academy. So basically we had two objectives. One objective was to increase progression from college-level courses to degree, to back to degree completion. The way we were trying to do that was through provided structured curriculum through the general education pattern. Second, we wanted to also develop strategies that would work with academics and instruction, I'm sorry, with support services by providing intensive orientation, counseling, advising, tutoring and faculty professional development workshops. So basically what we did is we took what was successful with ESP at the developmental level and we tried to replicate that for our general education pathways. The original intent was to create learning communities much like ESP because we saw such success with that. We found that when we actually started the general education pattern, the learning cohorts just did not work. So we had to figure something out. So we decided to create a pathway through the general education. So IPATH was created. It's for students. It's a general education transfer program to help students successfully transfer by providing streamlined curriculum through their general education, through their IGESI in their CSU courses. So what we found after students were in ESP, they were so cared for and loved and nurtured. And then they were given this really long piece of pink paper that said, okay, now you get to do your general education. And the she, if you've seen it, I was going to bring it. It's just overwhelming. So we said, why don't we take the best practices of ESP and have streamlined programs through their general education and use the same interventions that ESP did. So we did definite, so what we did is we took twenty-five of what we perceived are some of our best faculty members on campus in all of the areas of our GE and we trained them in non-cog and affective learning. This is what we were just learning, that many of our K-12 partners have done a lot of work in, in non-cog and affective work, but we didn't see a lot of it in the community colleges. So we said, let's train our teachers. We had smaller classes. We had access to the academic council. So if you were an IPATH instructor or IPATH class, you had to allow the academic counselor to come in twice a semester. And we have very targeted messages to our students regarding transfer because to be on a transfer pathway, you have to do things in a certain way to get out on time. So we had easy access to tutors. We did the embedded tutor model and then we did campus trips. Because as an HSI institution, we're here to hear our underrepresented students. Many of our students come here and they want to transfer, but it's a scary process. How do you imagine yourself at San Diego State, UC San Diego, San Jose State? So what we did is we have campus trips at other institutions. And here's some, some pictures of our students going with our Transfer Academy. We probably have visited over fifteen universities and these are all paid for and funded so that students can actually figure out what campuses they feel like they would like to transfer to. So currently we have eighteen, over eighteen hundred duplicated students in the program. We have sixty-seven what's tagged IPATH classes, which means students know that this class will be a general education requirement and I'll have an embedded tutor and it's a smaller class and, and I get to have access to my counselor to know about transfer. So they know that. It's becoming more. I'm not going to read these comments. You can read them yourselves. We also have forty-five teaching and counseling faculties. We're closing that gap between the academics and then also the the student support programs. Currently, this is a longitudinal, it's my fifth-year grant, so we're still, we're just now getting some data. So we're seeing in the overall student success rates are starting to increase in our, in our IPATH designated classes. And what we're really seeing is with our underrepresented students. We're really seeing some of the needle move more for that, our students are really moving forward in attaining to their degree because that's the goal. So that's on our campus. We're also working in alignment with the, with Channel Islands. So Josh has done a lot of work. We're doing work with our regional partners in the Ventura County District, Ventura, Moore Park, Oxnard and CSU Channel Islands. We're doing collaborative work. One of our own, Dr. Thomas Karasko, Chicago City Summit. We've done aligned to one degree. So we're really working in partnership with our CSU to kind of get students, you know, just our faculty talking together, all in our region. There's a lot of work going on in there, so, but I can't go into all of that. So not only are we reaching out for the university, but we're also reaching back and to want to really have our younger students be aware that college is for them. So we are working with our dual enrollment and our P program, which is an amazing program in our schools, which is really targeting underrepresented students in our own school district, at the high schools. And we're, and we have a bridge program in the summer. We invite, we invite freshmen, eighth graders, eighth graders going into ninth grade, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth on this campus to experience City College. And we're of course working on our policy program. All in the hopes of saying, congratulations, you're transferring. So we have a transfer success ceremony on May first. I want to invite everyone to come, which is going to be a wonderful event. We're celebrating the transfer process. We're inviting different campuses from all over, our top campuses that we transfer to. We're inviting alumni from City College that have gone to these campuses. We're inviting our students that have been accepted so they can meet, make relationships and really kind of passing the baton. Because really what we find that, you know, students move along their pathway, they drop off in these really important points. We're trying to shore those points up and really get them on their pathway to success. So with that, I'd like to introduce both Sheila and Pam, who will talk about.
Mind if I ask a question?
Oh, sure. Absolutely. Well, I don't know if questions are going to be at the end or not, so.
Do you want me to wait till the end after each one? They're all different, right?
This is virtual.
Yeah.
It's a, they're all completely different kind of this.
They're all different, but they all work to, we're all working together. But go ahead.
Um. So from fall, your persistence rate, what, what does that look like for your students?
Um, right now, from fall to fall or fall to spring or spring to fall?
Sure, both.
Persistence of students, you know, I have to go back to my data set because we have, so we're looking at data all sorts of ways, but I, I'd say they're, it's good, it's good in the sense that they are returning back. Students want to take additional IPATH classes. People drop off for various reasons. The ones who are transferring, they're going back to their homes. So there's other variables that are associated with that. But we do have a good, I mean, I can get that data. I can go get that for you for life.
I'm just curious. I'm sure it's successful.
Right. And what we're seeing is students, the whole, the whole reason is we want them, the reason we did streamline is we want them to take several IPATH classes at the same time so they can get through. They want to be part of it. And also taking with their friends, which is what ESP is, is really centered for. Yes.
Um, so it's, I mean, it makes a lot of sense that the way the IPATH is structured would lead to better success. So how do we then give that to everyone instead of just?
Well, that's where we are right now. This is a great question because we're at the point in the grant, this is the fourth year, the fifth year grant. So we're at the point of institutionalizing. So the, the questions we're asking is, is that it really sexually, is this something we want institutionalized as we go into pathways, guided pathways?
That's what I was.
Right? So we're really kind of having the big picture, you know, is IPATH going to be a program? Or is IPATH, are we seeing the best practices of IPATH so that the whole culture of City College is lifted up? So that all students will have the same interventions, but then it's really thinking really broadly as a campus. To say, how are we going to do that? And what's, how can we sustain the best practices, right? So yes, you would love, like I was saying, why I path emphasize every class?
Seems like.
So that IPATH isn't a program, it's who we are. It's our culture, right? So.
And then my last question was, what the trans, well, not just transfer, I guess, what their educational goal is, is that what's the correlation or the increase difference between students not in IPATH, specifically with your underrepresented populations?
So I don't know if I'm understanding.
So their goal attainment, whether it was an AA degree, a certificate or transfer, is that, do you see an increase with Hispanic, Latino students and Black African Americans?
Well, what we're trying, that's worth, we're working out right now because we're kind of in between right now. Before it was the whole grant, if you just looked at the grant, it was to go to, to see completion. If you could really follow the students all the way to their BA completion. But because of our discussions on guided pathways, it, it could be just about completion. So really that AA and then maybe BA, right? Because you've got to follow the student all the way through. Am I answering your question?
Yes. I mean, and I guess maybe, maybe just for later, it would be good to know what, but I mean, pathways will all wrap it up. I mean, it'll all, it'll all come together in the end. I, I see. Yeah. But
The success rates, the overall success rates for underrepresented students.
But I guess, I mean, you give a comment on your fifth year mark. So eventually you would know how percentage of those students actually transferred or all of that. And that will come.
Yes, yes. Because then, exactly. Because we're like kind of in the middle right now.
Right.
And what was interesting is we initially said intentional and non-intentional students. We couldn't, you know, what, what ESP did is they were able to close off section, you know what I mean? Have them close sections. We tried it. There's no way we could do it at the general education level. So we opened sections up. So what happened is that we had students that said, oh, IPATH, I want to take it. Then students that just enrolled into IPATH didn't even know it was a special class until the first week. Because we all tell them, all the faculty, we have a kind of a thing that, and we all meet as faculty too. We're like, wow, I'm in special class. And it was really interesting. In fact, we're seeing data to say that these students that didn't even know they went into special class are being raised up too. So it goes to the issue of, hey, this could be something that, so, so it's, it's for everybody. So it lifts everybody up. So.
You know, just one comment about this. One of the, the things that, when they interviewed us to be involved with the statewide guided pathways program, one of the twenty colleges in San, in California to be involved with that. So many of the things that you're going to be hearing about tonight, whether it's the, the IPATH or, or the other grants that we have, are things that are really part of the guided pathways movement. I mean, so, and, and that's why I think we got ranked so highly in terms of a college being in, involved with guided pathways because we are doing so many pieces of guided pathways already. So guided pathways is really kind of the next step for us, the logical step. And it makes so much sense. I mean, and building on this and building on the work of, of the others, I think, in that direction is, is really going to be a key.
Right. So really IPATH's kind of general education pathway. So it sounds like the first pathway model as best as we could. And it's kind of providing kind of infrastructure to kind of lift everything up. So would you get to hear about it next? Right? Anyway, so thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
So I'm Sheila Wiley. I'm in the English Skills Department and I was just, you know, sitting here and thinking, I've been here sixteen years and, and this is the first time I've ever presented to the board. So I can cross that off my bucket list. So we're really happy to be here. Our team got very excited when we were tasked with showing you what it is that we're doing because we feel passionate about the work that we're doing. So we're here with a few bragging rights. So the, the grant that I'm going to be speaking on, we call it the BST and it's the, we've got a long name, Community College Basic Skills and Student Outcome Transformation Program. And, and really the key word is transformation. That's what we're looking for. That's what we're working towards. It's a state-funded. It's one point five million dollars. We are now entering our third year in fall of eighteen. So we have had a a really interesting ride. Bronwyn Moore and I are the co-directors. I kind of take the English side of the house and she takes the math and, and she works with Elizabeth in Professional Development. So, so we started this grant. We had some really great ideas and then, you know, the, the, the mountain fell and, and AB seven oh five was implemented. But I have to say, because of this grant, we had already implemented a lot of ideas on what we were going to do to ensure student success, especially for underrepresented students. And because of, of our BST grant, we really now have this funding mechanism for, for a non-funded Assembly Bill, seven oh five. So we have restructured a lot of the work that we had started in order to comply with seven oh five. Most of all, we have started attending a lot of the workshops. We've been talking with a lot of the colleges that, that are, have a, a little ahead of us in implementation of seven oh five. We are in the process of really exciting thing of, of developing a, a first year seminar. And we're looking at that, a first year seminar course, where maybe, we've been talking a lot with administration about where that's going to go. Anita Cruz and I are, are joined at the hip on, on this one and, and creating a course that hopefully maybe we can look at promise students being required to take it. We don't know yet, but we're looking at things that will help our students in their first year. Hopefully first year semester, but certainly first year. We are working in conjunction with guided pathways. We are actively involved in working with the guided pathway team so we can coordinate our efforts, our students. And we're looking at a, we have an English one oh three class that's CSU transferable. We're looking to turn it into a UC transferable course, which will allow students who, you know, to, who would be more willing to take the class because of the transferability section of that. We're hoping because of what's going on with AB seven oh five in English, we can talk about that in a minute, that a lot of students will be counseled into taking class, a class that would enhance their reading, their reading comprehension. Anita and I have worked on revising our reading for nursing course because that's a course where a lot of students need to have additional help to pass in their nursing courses. And we're also communicating with the, the high schools, working with the high schools. What the, our main emphasis in is, is participation in reading apprenticeship, which is a, a program that we have gone through, found through a lot of training. And reading apprenticeship is a, a program that really allows students to transform them, the, the way they think about themselves as readers. And to view themselves as readers, especially readers who are tackling some difficult college tests. So Anita and I have finished the, the courses and now this summer, we're going to be taking a course which will allow us to do community practice here on the campus. We will be able to train other faculty that are here on our campus. So we're really excited about that. English is a second language. I'm just kind of running through this, but you've got all the information. Oh, math, we're going to switch and then we'll go back to, to English.
I, I know we're kind of short on time, so I'm, I'm thinking I might just pick out a couple of things to highlight. And if you have questions on some of the others, you can email us. Bronwyn and I worked closely on the math portion of this. I kind of want to hit on what AB seven oh five has done to us. So there's going to be, now we're going to have, once we finally have AB seven oh five, once we're compliant, we're going to have students that maybe ordinarily would have placed into arithmetic or pre-algebra. They're all going to go into at the lowest intermediate algebra or statistics. And so now our, we've been working a lot on our developmental math redesign. We wanted to be able to lift more students up, get more of them to degree. So now we're going to take all of that work and put it into our core requisite courses, which is what we're going to have to design. So students will be going right into intermediate algebra, but probably with some holes in their arithmetic and things like that. What we aren't going to be able to do is say, you must take this as a prerequisite. It's going to be, you go into intermediate algebra and we will have a core requisite support course to help remediate that. So that's what we need to work on for several levels now in our mathematics. We're going to be working on it for our intermediate algebra. Actually, we, we created one for our elementary algebra and then we got wind that the chancellor's office is giving us new guidelines that we won't be able to have a course that low. So intermediate algebra, statistics for sure, pre-calculus, college algebra and business calc. I think those are our big focuses that we are planning to work on this summer. So that's one of the things we have to do this summer is get all of those things ready to go, hopefully, but we're also planning to bring in some professional development. A lot of our instructors are going to sort of be shocked at the level of preparedness of the students coming right into those transfer level courses. So we're hoping to do professional development for those faculties. Some of the things that we already know, but we're hoping to bring in a neurologist from UCSB to really give us great training on how people learn or how people learn mathematics the best. So that's one of our things. We have last summer, we're working again for this summer, a summer book. So that's one of our things, um we have last summer, we're working again for this summer, a summer bootcamp in conjunction with the Promise. Last summer, we um focused the bootcamp on elevating students that placed at pre-algebra, getting them to the next level. This summer, we're planning, because we're not sure these placements are gonna sort of be all over the board with AB seven oh five, we're planning to focus on STEM students and to uh prepare them for whatever math course they're going to be taking in the fall. How do you study in math? How do you uh do homework? How do you prepare for a math test? All of those things. And also remediation of the things we know they're gonna be struggling with when they come into their math class in the fall. Um is there anything else that is jumping out on here that I could hit? I think I've sort of talked about a lot of them. We've been doing a lot of research in pathways models and corequisits as they're happening in other states. Uh some of this we did before, we knew we were gonna be in guided pathways, so we're also really involved in what's going on there. And assessment, so attending a lot of assessment meetings and working on, okay, what are our levels gonna be now? How are they gonna go in there? What are the courses gonna look like? That sort of thing. You have a question?
Oh, I I thought you were done.
Oh, I am done.
Oh.
Um.
With the whole thing?
No, they have the.
No, just hit me.
Okay, yeah.
No, sorry.
Connection.
Yes.
Um Elizabeth, are you gonna?
Oh.
Who's doing this? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Um so this is the Faculty Mentor Project, it is a collaboration um between actually many of our grants. It was originally started in collaboration between IPATH, our Title III grant, our Basic Skills Transformation Grant, and also it included triple S P funds. Um but it was conceived of and developed through the BST grant, and that was the uh the origins of it. Um it involves, and it's a pilot stage, twenty-five faculty members, um there's actually about twenty in the current cohort. A hundred and twenty-five students have been involved, and the current cohort is actually a hundred and five students. Um and the basics of the program, faculty tying with students. It's based on research that shows that the number one indicator of success in college is a close relationship between a student and a teacher. And so we wanted to create an environment where faculty could identify their students who were the most underserved, the most um inexperienced in navigating the educational environment, and and would help them through that that system. Um they are also fit, a faculty inquiry group, a substantial amount of non-cognitive professional development um training. For many of us, it's instinctual to work with our students at that close-up level, and for others of us, it's not done. So how do we how do we do that and how do we do it appropriately? Um also, in the second year, we just went into this year, there's an opportunity for these students who were formerly or who are actually currently and continue to be mentees to become peer mentors to other students. The program exceeded our wildest dreams, um it has been so incredibly successful. Um how value, and this is actually, this was a survey last sem- at the end of last semester, of the fifty-eight out of the, at that time, ninety-five students who were in the program. Um how valuable has the mentoring process been to your academic success? You can see there how many are at the five. To what degree has this mentoring program influenced your connection to SBCC? Again, just the image itself, but this is the one that matters the most to me. Has participating in the mentoring program kept you in college? Twenty-three students said I would have dropped out had it been for my. What percent was that? Well, of of that group, it was thirty-eight percent who responded to.
And and these are our students, which is important to remember, this is not a special group of students, I mean, this this is our everyday students.
Well, in fact, as we say, that we're teaching our students that we think are mo- most at risk.
And that's not.
It's our most at risk.
Most at risk. What, okay, what what?
From our own classes.
From your own classes, got it, thank you.
Um I'm reporting for um ESL, and they've had, um as you're all aware, they've had quite a a change uh over the last several years with curriculum. So what they're, what ESL is doing as part of the BST grant is they are redesigning their curriculum. They are working with non-credit, they are doing a lot of research, they uh put together some focus groups to the students to see what it is that students need. They um are continuing to provide uh workshops for their faculty to get their faculty all on board about where the direction of ESL. And the English writing studio, just like Pam was saying, um the English classes students uh very shortly in fall twenty nineteen, every student that comes in will have an opportunity to be in English one-ten. And so when we look at that, us, all the students are going to be re- uh in English one-ten, so what kind of support can we provide for them? So one of the uh the 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 big projects that English is working on is creating the studio model. Where the students then would have a small core group of of like students that they would come together, uh a small group, work together, have that support uh for those classes, so they, the English faculty have been visiting other colleges that have the studio model, they're bringing back ideas in order to create our own studio model here on the campus. What did I do? I have a question, Teresa.
Oh wait, I think I did something wrong.
You're.
It just went to the next one.
Oh, I know, it jumps in, okay.
So Jonathan had a question before you guys include this one.
Oh, sorry.
So I guess it's the same, uh it's a similar question to last time in terms of like, how do we provide this to more students than the number? You know, cuz it is a limited number in this, and it looks very successful, so how do we provide this to more people to scale it? And then I guess the, especially the mentor part, that kind of thing is something we take to the state and say we need more funding for like hard-time faculty off-hours, for example, so that, I mean, the data is pretty clear, so how do we translate that to more, to having more?
Well, let's go back to the first part, what we what we've done as far as the students who are, you know, getting into one-ten, we're creating um uh reading courses that will support them, we're also um going through the reading apprenticeship workshop so that faculty on our campus will be able to train other faculty in other disciplines on best practices for teaching reading, you know, for helping the students in their reading courses. Uh and I know that uh that's been an issue for a long time, students come in and they're, they are tackling pretty tough texts and 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 reading apprenticeship is is a transformative uh program that is really, it's on wildfire right now, um really across the country. So what we're doing is we're getting our own training, we're going through that so that we can train on campus and not have to send um students, uh faculty out to be trained.
And then, but in terms of like expanding the faculty mentor portion of it, cuz that's hundred and twenty-five students, would be great to have more than that. How could we do that? Or how do you see it?
Well, the faculty, like I'm, the faculty that are already participating, we're already talking to other faculty, saying this is really a cool thing. And and so there's more faculty, there there's not gonna be a lack of faculty who want to do this. It's a very enjoyable uh part of being a a a teacher, is having that special connection with students so that we determine that they're really.
It's actually hard to limit it, I have to say, like I decided I, well, now, and I had my five, six,
I know, I know.
and then, oh, I need to get these guys, I need these guys to also be, so it's sort of hard because you want to mentor a lot of them. But then there's only one of you to go around, so.
Right, and some of them like to show up every day in your office, every day, checking in, it's like, okay, hello, you know, and
Yes.
but it's so wonderful, it's a really win-win, win for the students and win for the faculty.
One little thing, we're starting for her in fall, and in addition of. This is so important that you guys are doing this, and when you, when I look at the future and, you know, our, you know, Montecito Union, Cool Springs, and Galita Carpenteria well, actually, I don't know, but I carp- the our surrounding elementary districts, you know, the state standards came, and so they're there. But Santa Barbara Unified, your your current seventh and eighth graders have not had any math or English adopted curriculum, so. And so when you're an elementary teacher and you're piecemealing things from open source, but you don't, you're don't, you don't have a discipline-specific background. So the junior high teachers are doing an amazing job, and so really what's happened now is it's not just our underrepresented students that are struggling with math, now it's the tutoring business has really hyped up, and so you know, it's a systemic issue. And so the fact that you guys are here just laying the ground so that when these kids come here, whether you are from whatever demographic, you're gonna get the support you need in math and in in English, and specifically the disciplinary literacy to think and read and write like a historian or a scientist, that's huge. Um and so, you know, the new, the, for the underrepresented students, there's language learners, they're currently doing the new testing, and so that, you'll see right now what's gonna be coming up the pipeline in terms of how these kids are scoring right now in speaking, listening, reading, and writing, and these are your language learner students where like English is traditionally not their first uh language. So just the fact that this would all come under pathways and to provide this, it's gonna be huge because it's not um.
Well, and it gives us an opportunity, this funny, especially with AB seven oh five, it's, you know, the, it's a state law but without money attached to it. Um this gives us, the the grants give us an opportunity to be really thoughtful and student-centered in how, you know, we can do some research, we don't have to just slack something together, and um it's, I just, I keep saying, gosh, it's fucking heaven's grants, cuz we didn't know that was coming
Oh, my God.
when when they were written, so I should also have added that we are, we have been meeting with our local high schools in math, I think you said in English too, to sort of give them a heads up, this is what's coming, um some preliminary talks about possible courses they might offer for senior year math to help ease that transition, so another benefit here is um strengthening our relationship with our local district.
I just wanted to back up just a little bit and get your opinion, since we've got you here, get your opinion on AB seventy, seven oh five, just in terms of, I mean, previously, we had seventy-five percent of our English uh students placing into less than college-level writing. Now we're talking about when AB seven oh five is fully implemented, placing them directly into transfer-level coursework. You have shown us a vision forward potentially of how we can get there, but I'm, I'm just wondering, how how did the faculty feel about? How do you feel about about this whole thing? I mean, there's some of us that were kind of, we were old school, and we kind of think, well, this is a grand experiment, but.
I don't want to.
I don't wanna speak for everyone in my department or even on my campus, I will say I have mixed feelings.
Just you then.
I do think that our current placement system has flaws. Um so so a change definitely needs to be made. I will say my biggest concern is if every student comes in and they, for math, they could go right into statistics. Um I feel that we're over-correcting in a way, because what will happen now is if they can finish stats in one semester, then they're done with their transfer-level math. Um there are a lot of students that we, that don't see themselves as potential STEM majors until they come here and have success in an algebra class here, and then we have an opportunity to mentor them and say, you're doing a great job, you should think about this.
So it's like, I can do this, yeah.
So we can steer them into STEM, which again, I'm biased cuz I'm in STEM, but I do think there are, in terms of scholarship opportunities, in terms of um job security, better pay, all those sorts of things, but when students don't see that for themselves right when they come in, which a, which a huge number does not, they're gonna choose statistics. Well, if they go down that statistics pathway, in order to change to STEM, they would have to go backwards, which I don't see anybody choosing to do, especially when money and time is involved. So my concern is I wish that we were saying, because the law says one year, you have one year to finish transfer level. I wish that our lowest course would be intermediate algebra, and then they can go to uh statistics or a STEM pathway. Because I I'm afraid, we're gonna correct on the one end, so we're gonna improve our numbers of underrepresented stu- represented students, um and women actually in STEM, achieving degrees, but we're gonna uh lower the number that may go into STEM. So I would say that's my concern. If we don't have that one semester s- to to work with them before they decide on their transfer-level course, they're gonna opt for the um for the non-STEM path because it's much shorter. Um a lot of BST, the original intent was to focus on the lower-level classes and to try to get students interested in computer science in particular. You come into a community college and you're weak in math, you're also probably weak in English, and, but you have a second language, you're really primed to be successful in something like computer science, but we gotta get them before they're in stats. And if they're in stats, they're they're on the humanities, social science path, and we've lost that opportunity. Which, and the data right now shows that we're we're being successful in intercepting them in the lower levels. Um the ESP data, we've 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 steered people who were like, no way are we gonna study STEM career paths. And they, and we've we've gotten them that way, and that's, that seed, people will say, oh, well, it's only ten percent, fifty percent, well, that's a family. That's not just one person, that's gonna be a person who will go to be, I'll be an engineer and will have two kids. And so AB seven oh five is very well-intended, and it's totally appropriate to call out how we're filtering our students. That is really, it's indefensible what's happening right now nationally.
Right, right.
But we were making some headway that is now being intercepted because the lower-level classes are being cut off. But we're gonna now transfer that effort to the corequisite, and we're hoping that we can re-correct, but it's gonna be more difficult cuz student, it takes a while to build the trust with students, but you can't just say to a student, you can do it. You you need a whole semester of saying it for them to actually believe it.
I appreciate those, that's kind of the boots-on-the-ground response right there, and that's really good, thank you.
Yeah, and I do appreciate, you know, I was an English major at CC and then here, and I transferred to UCSB, and then I got a master's in science and a reading specialty, so it's like all English, but I work with Dr. Bill Jacobs at UCSB. So as a teacher, I saw my, I now a mathematician, and in my reputation of mathematics, so I appreciate that you don't want kids, students to just check off statistics because changing their perception of themselves as mathematicians is gonna be huge for
Nice.
all aspects of their lives, whether it's financial literacy or whatever they do, but like, kids mathematize their world, then that's amazing.
Yeah. Yeah.
So thank you for doing that, cuz you can go STEM and choose liberal arts, but then you can't go backwards.
Right, cuz you start back lower.
Especially the money and time involved.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Well, thank you for the labor, love all these.
Okay, well, that was perfect segue, so thank you so much.
Yeah.
So um this is Removing Barriers to STEM Success, and it's our Title III Department of Ed. It has, actually, it is our biggest grant, and it has seventeen different interventions, and I promise you, we will not talk about seventeen, but to divide into two basic categories, the first is exactly what you just talked about, which is comprehensive, non-cognitive professional development. How do we have fa- help faculty to help students see themselves in the ways that we need them to? And then also STEM curriculum redesigning support, which is of course so more critical now than ever. Uh Bronwyn Moore and myself, Elizabeth Impoff, we are um grant directors, and it is a five million, three hundred twenty thousand dollar grant. So very quickly, I don't know who's familiar with what non-cognitive is, because we've been hearing that word, it's actually a through line in all of our grants, and you may not be familiar with it, so I'm gonna give you the most basic, basic definition, and I wanna let you know that we have a three-day faculty professional development workshop that explains what this is, and I'm gonna do it in thirty seconds.
You should go, it's.
It's the foundational social, emotional, mindset, skills, and knowledge a student needs to have in place for cognitive and content learning. And so many of you might be familiar with both mindset, um or neuroplasticity, those are examples of the very wide net that is cast in the realm of non-cognitive social emotional development, they're foundational skills. So we really, we realized, and I should say that, I I wanna really um explain that these grants are all interconnected. The IPATH grant was the incubator, where we learned that we really, that faculty really were in need of extensive professional development, and um and really a cultural shift in the way we looked at education and teaching learning on the campus. And so collaboratively, a group of faculty, starting with about twenty faculty, worked together to develop what eventually came the, became the Effective Learning Institute. It's a faculty three-day introduction to non-cognitive learning. Um and it's followed by a faculty inquiry group, where faculty have the ability to meet um monthly afterwards. And as we do a cohort every year or two a year, the big uh growths as faculty join it. Now, something that's really important to understand here is that we're not just measuring student success, please understand, my life is about student success, but happy, fulfilled faculty who get their, get get their students are better, are better teachers, it makes all of the difference in the world. So we are measuring both the effect on our students, and we're just starting to be able to really do that, we're starting to look at persistent rates and success rates, but we're also discussing what it does for faculty, how does it affect you as a faculty member? Um and it is all, now we're very excited, for the first time this um August, it's going to be part of our new faculty orientation, so it's gonna be mandatory for all the faculty. Uh currently, we've had sixty-seven faculty members go through um the A- the Ally, um and we have twenty-five in it, we have twenty-five in our August cohort. And I also should add something very quickly, um we have been able to go to different conferences, we're learning about non-cognitive and 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 teaching about it. And SBCC has really become a leader in non-cognitive social emotional development, um and and teaching and learning um throughout the country. And so people are coming to us and asking, so in our next, in our August cohort, I really want, we want to give space to all of our students, we're opening up three spots to outsiders, we have um somebody coming, two people actually coming from UNLV, we have somebody coming from the University of um of Illinois at Chicago, and I think somebody from San Francisco. Um and just to really give you a brief idea of how it affects um. Um, and just to really give you a brief idea of how it affects um faculty, and this is just a small little survey, we do survey every time. What you're really looking at is you're looking at the difference between the blue and the um and the light blue. And so you're seeing that starting seeing uh faculty are learning or seeing for the first time that they actually are powerful when it comes to student motivation. It's not just about the student and their own sense of motivation, there's also a great power and the ability of the faculty member to see themselves, uh to help students to see themselves as learners. So in order to create a cultural shift, a one, a three-day workshop is not enough. And so um we've decided that we would really create a cycle for transformation and change. And so it begins with the Ally and then faculty look at their own teaching and learning, we look at the numbers, we look at the numbers for underrepresented students. Great, I have great success rates, but how are my Latinx students doing? How are my African-American students doing? How are the women in my classes doing? And so when we start to call out for different groups, even our most successful instructors begin to see that there is a gap. And 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 determine that it's necessary to to fill that gap. And so they then go on to, after they see the need for change, to create a plan for change. They um implement research in SOTL, Scholarship on Teaching and Learning, we're looking at that too in their classes. And they create a plan for change, they research it, and then eventually um they share it out. So we have twenty participants to date who've actually participated in this process of uh scholarship, teaching, and learning. Um, twenty and we have twenty new ones who are coming into our August cohort. Um. So for faculty who participated in a stola, um for Latinx students, Alaskan students in the it was STEM courses during fall two thousand seventeen. Um, there's six percent higher success rate, um six percent, I mean not the biggest number, but that's fifty more successful underserved STEM students. And then eventually sharing it out entirely, we're creating a new culture of teaching and learning, we're creating a culture of scholarship on teaching and learning. And so we'll have grant funded our first retreat and conference where faculty come together to do deeper dives into non-cognitive practices, which I must add are substantially equity-based. Um, and um and we'll share out what they've learned through their research. And that's the site.
So Elizabeth is in charge of the professional development component, or which one do I push? This one, okay, yeah, okay. Elizabeth is in charge of the professional development component, which is a huge component of Title III, Removing Barriers to Success. I am coordinating the efforts in STEM-specific interventions. So um I can't hit everything, so I've just, I'm gonna give you some highlights in terms of STEM success of interventions for student outreach, curriculum redesign, and um what Title III is doing to improve the infrastructure of all of Santa Barbara City College. So in terms of student outreach, we have had some awesome experiences. One of them is bringing a large group of women. The first year, we took them to an international women's professional networking uh conference, uh targeting women uh who are majoring in STEM-related technology. Uh, this, all all of these women here that we took uh to Texas uh were majors in computer science or engineering. And they um then this year, we took them again to the same conference, but it was in Florida. So STE- so Title III, in cooperation with Equity and in cooperation with STEM Transfer Program, flew these students to this really powerful professional conference just devoted to women in technology. We were the only community college represented in the first year, I think there was one other that caught on the next year. So we also, Title III in conjunction, um in cooperation with uh the four Enheñeros, which are four former students of ours who are now practicing engineers, nonprofit organization, we put on a giant robotics competition where students were given the opportunity to build robots, they were mentored by engineers who were also underrepresented, underserved, uh but are now successful engineers. They they were mentored in building, programming, and and then racing their robots, uh it was lots of fun. So um this this year, we plan to take those same robots to, in collaboration with the Robotics Club, to Noche de Ciencias, which I think is coming up. So in looking at these photos, you'll be able to see the diversity and that we're targeting our student population that is designed to benefit from Title III. What you can't see in this picture right here is that all but one of these women are bog students, so they're all very poor. And what you and but, and of of outcome of this student outreach was that three of these girl, women, excuse me, um got lucrative, high-paying internships in the, and that's ongoing, that's there, that could grow easily. One of them actually got a job placement and is in the career now and we actually lost, it's not a great thing, but we lost them because they they're not our student anymore because they got a great job as a result of this this conference. If you look at this picture again, you'll see, and we have the STEM Transfer Program to thank for the excellent recruitment, it is our target population. But these students um are, almost all of them are first generation. So they don't have role models in their family of practicing engineers. And what you can't see is that a third of them, their parents didn't even graduate from high school. And they had this amazing opportunity to be mentored by people who look like them, program and build robots and who are successful in engineering right now. Um, so the next thing I want to focus on is how Title III has improved the infrastructure of Santa Barbara City College. We have been able to remodel the math lab, we have been able to create satellite um study areas throughout campus to support STEM tutoring, STEM um and STEM study groups. And we are now looking to improve the internet and wifi of all of Santa Barbara City College. Every member of Santa Barbara City College, staff, faculty, and students will benefit from this massive upgrade. So here's the math lab and what we were allowed to do, it was about two hundred thousand dollars of federal grant funding. Um, we in the same foot footprint can accommodate many more students so that it's a quieter space that can fill more students. This is a satellite study area that it used to just be an open patio where students can meet and study together and also do the tutoring. And um this is a digital classroom, that's Pam right there. Um, it's classroom, classrooms cost about, these digital classrooms cost about a hundred thousand dollars. We've got three of them thanks to the Title III funding. The the math lab upgrade was about two hundred thousand dollars. That satellite study group, study area was about fifty thousand dollars. All federal funds to improve the ability of students to study and collaborate everywhere. So um and then this is a report on how we can improve our wifi and internet. It's federal funds, if it's approved, and we're hoping that it is, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to make the wifi better. And it needs to be made better, so really. Um, so the next intervention that I wanna point out is how how is Title III improving the actual content of STEM? And so these are just highlights, we can't talk about everything. We've shortened sequences, we've paid faculty to shorten the sequence of biology so that students can get through that major more quickly and transfer. We've paid faculty to create lesson plans that make computer science more relevant to underrepresented students and to give them greater access. We have um, we have, we're working on the Summer Institute, which Pam talked about, but it's not just for basic skills, it goes all the way up the sequence. And uh we've created a supervised tutoring course that if it comes online in the fall, we have solid data to say that that course for eternity will generate three hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue um by collecting FTES in our math department tutoring lab. And the last intervention, which is the biggest that I wanna talk about, is the supplemental instruction tutoring, which is a specialized tutoring that will be especially eff- effective for STEM education. So um phase one happened at the beginning of fall where we trained approximately twenty-four STEM faculty in this more collaborative, less focused on one-on-one tutoring, which is perhaps more effective in humanities and English, and more collaborative education. Phase two, we had the um faculty, the STEM faculty who had been trained in phase one create tutoring training um in phase two for about forty students, forty-five students. Um, and that happened at the beginning of the semester. Um, we served, we have provided additional tutoring to over fifty-four courses. Um, each course, for every thirty-five students, there was eight hours of tutoring per week to get these students through these really challenging gatekeeper courses. There was up to four hours per week of paid faculty involvement as additional support for these these very challenging courses. And um this is the tutor training face-to-face that the STEM faculty created and as you, it's also still in one of those digital classrooms. And the STEM faculty have also created an online component tutor training program, which is coming online this um this month. So those are just some highlights.
That's great.
Wow.
And good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am gonna be bringing up the rear here, just discussing the latest of our Title V grants that comes to you to this campus. Uh, my name is Dr. Joshua Ramirez, I'm psychology faculty, I am the department chair for psychology as well. I was the faculty liaison to Cal State Channel Islands as well for our IPAD grant. And apparently Elizabeth decided I needed more work, so I'm a parent and I'm a grant as well. In a lot of ways, when we take a look at the objectives of this grant, it's a continuation of a lot of the work that we already began with IPAD. Um, in addition to trying to create curricular pathways to students, trying to be able to offer students um reduce barriers to enrollment and also offering them the learning support that they need to be able to obtain their degrees. We were working as part of a larger conversation in the region with our partners over at Oxnard College, at Ventura College, at Moor Park College, with our transfer partner in CSUCI Channel Islands, with the rhetoric that says we're trying to move students towards one degree. That's the motto that CSUCI offers us and we try to work our our transfer initiatives through them as well, um and with them as a partner. Um, one of the other lessons that we had to learn from all of this is that we had to be able to get to know our students better. A lot of the transfer initiatives that we currently have are built on models and rhetoric that says the one way to be able to get students where they need to be is to be able to streamline them to full-time status. But the biggest lessons that we learned out of all of these grants is that we have to understand where our students are coming from and how they are patching together their education. And that rhetoric that says try to streamline them to full-time status is simply not a reality for our students. Just look to our own data, starting from fall two thousand twelve all the way through spring two thousand sixteen, and the pattern is clear. Our students have flipped part-time majority. And that means that when we try to consider student success, that means trying to clarify what we mean by part-time status and also trying to meet them where their needs are right now. On the surface, if you take a look at the data, looking at the retention gap between full-time and part-time students, the picture on the surface is very clear, it's the idea that part-time status itself is a problem for our students. And in fact, if you take a look at the rhetoric in education circles, if you take a look at how it has been framed, it seems to suggest that being part-time is the problem. And I think that that has a way of stigmatizing students, the very language about normative time to degree doesn't accept the fact that students are where they are right now. And for a myriad of reasons, the some, the things that we casually understand about about what our students' needs are. The idea that they are trying to take classes in the backdrop of multiple jobs, that they're trying to meet their family obligations as well. That's at least part of the picture. Students come to us and in their first couple of semesters, their first four years into higher ed, they find that they cannot keep up pace. They lose classes at the very beginning and so they try to say to themselves, maybe a year down the line, maybe two years down the line, maybe things will be more convenient for them, and that's the trend, unfortunately. And on the college side, unfortunately, we don't always have the opportunity to be able to meet their needs. If they fall from full-time to part-time status, then many of the initiatives that we had that are federally funded um unfortunately do not apply to our part-time students, so there are support services that they do not have access to. There's financial assistance that they do not have access to as well. If they try to supplement their education by trying to do classes in the evening, then there are support services they simply do not have access to. The financial burdens, the burdens of trying to manage the scheduling options that we give them that are not done with intentionality to try to help students move through the system. These are the things that prevent students from being able to make their progress towards their degree. On top of that, the most critical component besides the teaching that we can offer them, the need for learning support services that my colleague, a Dr. Avananda Galvassar can speak to.
Hello, everybody, this is just my second year at SBCC, so I get to be here before she goes. Um, so uh the result of all this passion that you're seeing comes from our participation last year in the leading from the middle academy, where we talked about who our students were and who were, you know, and looking at the research, we talked about how they weren't able to complete and we just didn't, wanted to know what was happening to those part-time students. So what they don't have mostly in those evening courses is access to tutoring services, access to the campus culture that gives students that sense of belonging, and so this is kind of where I come in. And I guess I'm a part of all the grants because learning support is the main intervention for many of the grants. So a lot of what I've been looking at around the state is looking at our own rich history of tutoring support with many accolades at SBCC and a Dr. Malloy at the back is has won the ESP.
No doctor.
No doctor, but nevertheless, the chancellor's grant, the beautiful picture. So I think we have to recognize how tutoring and learning support, the mentoring piece, is already in the non-affective domain. Um, students work with other students to teach them how to be successful students, what is it, the strength? What is it that led them to be successful? And those are powerful stories and testimonials that you've heard. Um, we're also working on continuous innovations in student learning programs, you've heard about the SI program. I myself am SI-trained and I think this will be a great program for our evening students. And we'll build build it into the curriculum, so the curriculum, so they don't have to seek it out on their own, it's gonna be built in. And I'm trying to pass that through the curriculum instruction um committee right now. And we're looking at supplemental instruction models and really working in collaboration. So learning support and teaching and our students are not all siloed in different areas and we get to have these conversations many, many times, you're just seeing one of the results of those. And I think Elizabeth wants to round off with what we're doing at the professional development, I'm sorry, Josh. I love more, you're you're up, yeah, so go ahead.
The learning, the learning support services are a critical part of this grant. If students are to be able to persist in these classes, then they need to have that learning support. That's at least one major component of what we're trying to do to be able to meet the significant challenge that is faced by these flex students. The other thing that we are facing is a need to be able to restructure how we think about scheduling as well. We need to be able to give students scheduling options that happen to work for them. And some of the department chairs are actually trying to move us in the direction of trying to rethink how we offer these classes with some intentionality behind them. Part of that means learning how to be able to schedule these by discipline together in ways that happen to make sense. Trying to advance the use of hybrid classes across the campus as well. And also to be able to offer scheduling options, eight-week classes and late-start classes as well, so that students, if they happen to drop off once uh one part of the semester, they can pick up another as well. The other thing that we are trying to do is to be able to offer students curricular options that make sense for them if it turns out that they have jobs that they have to attend to as well. So in addition to expanding hybrid, eight-week, and late-start classes, one of the things that we wanted to do was to try to introduce an evening college at SBCC. One that would allow students to have a streamlined curriculum that would allow them to be able to at least meet one or more of the four degrees in this program. We patterned an evening college after Kenyatta College, our neighbors up to the north, who have had a robust evening program that in its initial pilot happened to work with a hundred and fifty students but graduated with two hundred and thirty-two degrees. The program itself is built on the idea that students can earn one or more degrees on uh on the way to transfer as well. So I got a chance to be able to take a look at Kenyatta College's model for four of their degrees and it is mapped onto SBCC's curriculum to about ninety-two percent. There are a couple of gaps that we can try to fill, but we've done the work to try to see if we can try to map out at least four of these degrees. And we're trying to work with Blake Barron and also Bronwyn to try to see if we can. if we can also try to create these curricular maps for STEM as well. I had to go with what I know, I'm psychology department chair, so I started with psychology. So the AAT degree in psychology here is built on a three to four semester system. Students can try to complete their associate's degree in the evening college to start in about three to four semesters with academic support as well and a point person of contact in the evening so that students have someone that they can contact readily, whether that's online or in person. But students need that close touch. However, the model itself is not AB seven oh five just ready, so that's why there's a little hashtag right there. Um on top of that, in this discussion about 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 trying to meet degree completion um and in trying to reconcile this with the guided pathways, we need a transfer partner in mind. We want to keep in mind our partnerships with UCSB and with Cal State Channel Islands as our closest regional partners. But we also turn to our partners at Antioch University as well. They have degree completion programs that would allow students to be able to complete upwards of sixty units here at U at SBCC. And also allow them to have conditional acceptance to bachelor degree programs and at least in psychology, there's conditional acceptance to a clinical psychology degree in Latino mental health. Imagine the possibilities for our Latinx populations who being seniors in high school envisioning a professional track for them all the way to the master's degree for a number of individuals who are looking to professionalize themselves but do not want to leave within fifty miles of their own families. The possibilities for the psychology departments alone are exciting. But even then, the idea that students may want to course correct is also built into the system as well. Kenyatta College has identified a number of interdisciplinary degrees such that if they were on a psychology track, they have the opportunity to be able to change course if necessary. The interdisciplinary degrees map onto several other interest areas in the guided pathways as well that would allow them to be able to find other tracks to other careers if they're thinking about careers in broad strokes. And again, we're trying to adapt this model to also allow us to be able to create curricular pathways for STEM fac- uh for STEM oriented students as well. The problem is that when it comes to this model, Kenyatta College is a little bit ahead of the curve because it's mostly built on a hybrid instruction model. And that means that if we want this model to be successful, we not only have to expand on the number of hybrid classes and online classes, but we also have to be able to offer our faculty the professional development necessary. Not just the technical skills, but the skills to understand the equity needs of our students and also to be able to humanize the online environment as well. That is the entry point for many of our students, it's one of the areas for which students need to have that close touch and if we can offer that in the online environment, that's important. But beyond that, our faculty need to be educated about equity issues as well. That's where that's significant problem number three. The challenge that we are facing, the need for more equity minded faculty and staff training and programs to meet flex student needs for which Elizabeth implores to come.
Oh, as I was sitting here thinking about, you know, every faculty member who's been presenting today has been ally trained or except for one. And this is exactly what we teach not to do. So the idea of standing up and just lecturing at 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 a group of people and not making it interactive, so I wanna say um this is not what we do, don't do this at home. But um so we look at the ally before, we had the affective learning institute, that three-day workshop. And the three-day workshop covers four major areas in order to create broad categories for understanding social emotional learning. It's mindfulness, social emotional communication, uh neuroplasticity and actually brain science. Uh but the last piece is e- is equity um and is actually inter- interwoven through everything. And our faculty had the hardest time with that piece of it because it's it's a it's a difficult conversation to have. The conversations about real equity and implementing real equity on our campus. And so we realized that in the ally, it wasn't enough, we couldn't handle it well. If you if you if you go too deep and you don't do it well, you cause more harm than good. But if you don't dedicate time to it, then we're really closing our eyes to one of the essential elements in non-cognitive teaching and in 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 interpersonal teaching. And so in this grant, identifying the hole that we found in the Title III grant without funding to really do a deep dive into equity, we added the community cultural wealth and relevance workshop. And it's not it's not in place yet, but we have a group of faculty right now who are working, actually not just faculty, um faculty and staff from across campus who are working together to put together a true deep dive into questions of uh cultural wealth, cultural relevance, equity, race and all the hard discussions that really need to take place on our campus. Um and so we hope to have that available in the in the fall semester. Um and um and that creates a real cycle of change, learning about new methods and techniques for learning. Uh learning about the areas in which we are, we really need to identify the the holes and the gaps in our in our system. Uh creating a plan for change and researching that change and then sharing it out so our colleagues can learn what we've learned from one another and work collaboratively. So in the National Educational Forum, um we are ahead of most of the conversations when it comes to um what's going on at the community colleges. And I really wanted to just take a moment to acknowledge the amazing work of my colleagues who are fantastic. But also really to tell you that when we go out and we go to workshops and conferences, um SBCC really is looked to as the leader among community colleges. Um it's largely through the work that's supposed, you know, started with ESP, went on through SPP and it's continued with these grants. Um the big picture, um the four grants represent more than twelve point five million dollars for our students and our college programs. Grants are the way to fund student-centered equity-based innovation at SBCC in a time of scarce resources, so please support our grants. All the grant and our faculty are pursuing grants. All grants are complementary, they all work together, they are integrated, they are collaborative and work to support the SBCC mission, educational master plan plan. And now fortunately, we have this amazing foundation and resources in place as we head into this conversation about guided pathways. The major brands are the result of SBCC faculty initiative. Um to create and fund programs essential to student success and equity, our tradition of SBCC faculty leadership for grants really does set us apart from other colleges. Um because the faculty are in, our grants are more successful, our in our initiatives are more successful. Um it makes our grant funded in- innovations true national models.
It's amazing.
Truly extraordinary.
So the the nine, that's like the future, the vision, the the wish list, okay.
So I do have one quick question, um the Promise Program has one of its criteria being twelve credits. And based on what Josh is talking about with the part-time aspect of this, part-time is is not the problem.
Um so I'm just wondering, how do you reconcile that, what's what's your comment?
Yeah, just briefly on that.
Well, one of the things that we did last month was to try to hold a steering committee where we invited members from SBCC Foundation just to sort of drop a hint to them. Um that uh these students may not be full-time status at SBCC, but there are requirements for enrollment in the evening college that reconcile with full-time status students.
I love that evening evening college.
The the idea that students need to have contact with an academic council and that they have to have a student ed plan. Um and also a recognition that uh one of the big lessons that we learned from this regional partnership. Students may be part-time status not only at SBCC, but they may be part-time status at multiple campuses.
Mm-hmm, so full-time, yeah.
They may be full-time equivalent but part uh but full-time nowhere. Um I just got a chance four years ago to wander through Oxnard College and a student was in the library and said, Doctor Ramirez, I took your class and it's like one hundred. Why are you at Oxnard College? That made us realize that students are patching together their education. Um and so this process by which they get towards one degree, that is amorphous for students and that's what this initiative is there to be able to meet students where they are in this evening college is one possible intervention.
Thanks so much for your work, you guys, really it's really extraordinary.
I I got one quick thing, we worked with the Promise before we wrote the grant. And so they promised us that if we could create a plan where students would have a plan through a part-time, long-term educational plan, that they would fund the promise for them. So it's so part-time students with the plan and in collaboration with the with the promise will actually be eligible for the promise student.
Starting in the fall, is it just amazing?
Not that far yet, but we're working on it.
Okay, no, it's good to know.
And really, I mean, I think you we serve each other, I mean, that's the thing.
Absolutely.
The heart of that foundation board is, I mean, hands down, like there, I mean, you'll see them, you'll see them at a gala, you know, they set up every other board in town.
Amazing.
You're so lucky.
Well, and they say yes a lot.
Yeah, the yes.
Yes, they do.
We could, yeah, let me think about it, let me work on it. Yes.
Sure, no problem.
Yeah.
Great idea, let's do that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so your attitude, that reciprocal attitude of just how can we improve on this is is great, yeah, so thank you.
Great.
Yeah, I just had something I I wanted to share with you, you were, you guys are so far ahead, so far different. Um I just spent a couple of weeks ago s- some time in Mexico. Um and I have two quote unquote adopted, three, maybe four adopted kids down there. But this all started years ago and at this point, um next year, one of them will become a doctor, it looks like. One of them's doing an internship, a girl, doing an internship in product, as an engineer in product manufacturing. Their s- educational system is quite a bit different than ours, a lot different. They have to choose before they start school what they're gonna do and they can't change. They're stuck with it, there's no changing as they learn and learn more, they're just stuck in that rut. And it's pretty much full-time or don't go at all. Um and what we what we're offering these children here, these prospective students is so, it's just more than just world-class, it's absolutely wonderful. And I I really feel like we're not commuting and communicating that to these young people that if they were anywhere else, you're not gonna have these options and this ability to choose.
I don't know, I I I.
And this flexibility that you guys are just bringing to the table, it's amazing.
Our students are so grateful. They are, I mean, I I I can teach the full spectrum, but teaching at the the developmental level,
Yeah.
those students are so grateful. And they they say it every day and that's why this is such a rewarding job. I think our students are acutely aware of of what we're doing for them, I I mean.
I would I would agree that I think our students are and I guess my point really was
Yeah.
there's all these students out there that aren't coming here.
Right.
And I I don't think we're getting that message to that population. Um but I I what you're doing is just like what we need to do, we have to get those completion rates up, we have to
I think that that's.
we have to make those economic differences go away um somehow, better than we've been doing and I just.
No, I I remember when we went out for the last bond and
Yeah.
just how, I mean, I wouldn't say it's our students, I would say, I mean, I I so at the time, my my children were graduating from high school and I was like, come on, go for the bond. And they were like, ah, my kids are going on to Ivy League, my kids are going to UC, why should I support City College? And I'm like, your kids are in dual enrollment right now. And the reason why they're able to now leapfrog into these really.
Thank you.
And so that's where I think we really need to focus on letting our community know what we already do, especially in terms of dual enrollment.
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Um I think that's the population that needs to realize how world-class what we're doing is
I agree.
and how they are immediately benefiting.
Yeah. Wonderful. That's so funny to me.
So we've got a board, we've got a board uh, Detroit Board of Directors that's telling all about this.
How do you really feel about that?
Well, they were my friends and I'm like, I'm true, I'm like, I'm, you're my friend, I teach at City College, your kids are going to
This is great.
uh dual enrollment calculus, dual enrollment media and you don't think that's helping you right now?
I said, I've had public tell me, the Promise Program is wonderful, but my kids are going to a four-year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and whatever. And I, what happened in the conversation was that um it turned out her kids have been in dual enrollment the whole time. And and I'm going and so, how big a donation did you make to the Promise Program? Come on, you could afford that, you could afford to do this to some extent.
Yeah.
And uh end of conversation, but she's got a big smile on her face as she walked out. I I I think I think that awareness and that gratefulness and as bad as some groups or some people say, things that I hear foreigners and other people say about the United States, I off- but I also look at the fact that why do you think they wanna come here in the first place? And so, community, public relations is extremely important. And um I don't know, I'm on this board of trustees, so I think that's that. But I'm really impressed that we're making some inroads here. And I really hope that it that it amounts to actual change, to actual changes that are improvement. Because sometimes you can change just to change, but when you're not having an effect and it's not getting better, like the output of the high schools students that come to us, um that needs, there needs to be changes and they don't seem to, the changes that are happening aren't making it better. And um so that's kind of discouraging, but you guys are, it seems to me you're showing really positive results. And that's heartwarming and we, and as a trustee, I need to hear those stories from you guys because I'm in front of the public. And if you don't give me good positive stuff to talk to, to talk to about, what am I gonna tell tell them? I I need that input from all of you.
So here's one thing you can tell them.
There we go, okay.
Then these grants, which I don't think we mentioned, they are extremely competitive.
Yeah.
And the reason why we've gotten the, we keep getting them is because we deliver real data to show that uh that we are moving the needle. ESP, I mean, the the profound changes that have occurred because of ESP are 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 just, they're public. And they're, so so the reason, we've we've got this momentum going and that's how one grant feeds into another, feeds into another and it's why, I mean, it is a burden, but it's also a pleasure that we have these grants and we earn them through through the good data of places like ESP and Gateway, that's something that hasn't been mentioned, but Gateway was the seed, was the seed all, I mean, you you remember Jack Hullem starting Gateway and that just has kind of been the the grassroots for everything, I think.
Thank you guys, can you last thirty second comments, thirty thirty-three seconds?
How can we better support the evening college, cause that seems like a great new thing for us to do it?
Yeah. Good and great.
Well, one of the things that that we also have to recognize is that when it comes to Kenyatta College, Kenyatta College regionally sits in between several different universities.
Mm-hmm.
Um so just commute-wise, it happens to serve as sort of a hub for anybody who wants to be able to to get enrichment in their education. So one of the things that we need to, that I think that we need to do is to be able to uh try to just get the word out. But it's uh it's job placement agencies that I think that we need to reach out to, who better to be able to reach out to in the community than those people who know that there are adults out there um who have busy lives but also want to be able to complete that degree. So getting the word out to HRs, that's probably one of the things that we can substantively do to be able to promote this, not just to build on the student population that we have, but also to grow that as well.
Yeah, to reach new portfolios, yeah.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Very cool, very cool.
Here.
HR managers. You know a lot of them, let's get the word out, keep it going so they don't forget.
I'm I'm very grateful for the presentation, I I think I learned a lot, but it just wet my appetite.
Hey, amen.
I I would like to schedule a half a day where we
All you're in.
can can uh can learn more about this.
Good one.
I would attend.
And um and it is, it struck me as is, does anything like this happen at the high schools? Are high school faculty coming to the same understanding?
Well, well, actually, one of the things, we have met with high school for math
You can.
He's got a.
I know that.
and they were really responsive, they wanna come to the summer institute and participate in the professional development and so
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's what, I mean, and that, when I have had contact with the high schools, it's been incredibly positive.
But I would I would imagine it has been because we have complained for years and years that what we're receiving are under-prepared students. Which leads, I think logically to the question, why isn't something like what you are experiencing and what you are doing happening at the high schools?
So I don't, I.
It's another grant.
I'm in a, I'm in a conversation, I'm sorry. I've been in a different city, but my husband is a high school teacher and I do think that it's uh they have some of the same challenges that we have, you know, they they get these mandates and things that they have to do often unfunded and they're often overworked as well, so I'm not sure, I think sometimes I mean, for me here, it's because we have all these really amazing motivated colleagues and then we all sort of feed off each other. And sometimes um you don't always have that opportunity in the high school too. They they'll have like one day, the entire district is meeting, but they don't have opportunity for some of that smaller professional development that we do in flex or committees or things like that. So I don't know, it may just be us reaching out in these ways, maybe somebody somebody else spreading the brand.
No, I like I like the fact that you're you're, instead of complaining about it, we, our problem is what we're getting. They did, that needs to be fixed so we can do better. We can't ask them to change if we don't lead by example and.
This is my problem all the time because I do, of course, you know, maybe there are things happening in the K-12 system.
You can't pass the buck, you gotta do something.
Exactly, but where are students supposed to go if they're not prepared? The we are the place they're supposed to go if they weren't prepared.
Amen.
So it doesn't make sense to complain about that, we just, we are the place of opportunity.
There you go. Thank you.
And I think that California community colleges, I'm not from California and when I heard about them, I was like, oh my gosh, that's the most wonderful thing I've ever heard of. I was a high school teacher in Oakland, I taught high school, I think for four years. I was teaching there when they went into receivership. I'm the same person, I mean, I mean, I'm a lot older, but but I remember being in that broken system and not being able to be successful. And I I I, so the thing about Santa Barbara City College is, I mean, it's just an amazingly fertile environment where I can be impactful. If you put me in the Oakland schools right now, I think I would have the same challenges that I had in the in the late eighties, early nineties. So it's it's to to blame the high school teachers. I I did teach dual enrollment for a year and I remember my son going, well, we're gonna watch a video today on, and I'm like, why, how dare they? And then when I taught five days a week, calculus five days a week, that fifth day, and I only had three classes to teach and the high school teachers had five classes to teach, on the fifth day, I was like, where's the video? And I was exhausted, it's a much bigger job, I I mean, it's exhausting.
You know, there are other systemic um issues and we, Mr. Matzoka, like Mr. Bibi, you know, they get these jobs and then they uncover the things that they didn't know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I think we will give him grace to and time to talk to us at our joint board meeting, which will be scheduled here pretty soon. With that in mind, we could talk to him for forever, and if we will have to just get, we're gonna, we're gonna push you on one of them that item.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, I think I think what you said, what you said was recorded.
Uh to be continued, so that's our item eight point one from Moshe Twitter.
And it kept all those things on the table here.
Moshe, Moshe, second hit, Richard, thank you so much.